Go ahead and call the officers into order. I'm gonna ask Councilwoman Jackson to be here today to give us an invitation.
Dear Father, we just thank you for this day and for this opportunity to give service in your kingdom. Oh God, we ask right now that you will hear your holy name. They took work in us and threw us along with them, God. Because, Sandra, without every imagination, everything that is set itself against the knowledge of who you are, Lord God, we actually to bring it and thought it together with you, Lord God, that we would honor you and honor you, oh God, makes us to use us for your glory. Mold us and shape us into the men and women of God that you called us to be as leaders and as citizens. Oh God, we will always be carefully give you name, the glory, praise, and honor, and in Jesus' holy precious and righteous name, my friend.
Amen. I know several councilmembers have asked to add a decision of pardon. I think councilman was sure also on the promise at this time of the way. Councilman was sure.
Yes, temporarily hiring for public works that you don't serve, Mr. President.
Councilwoman, light switch?
Yes, there's a light switch.
At this time, we have Judge Drake to come forth for a few minutes down the aisle. And really to see, and then I'm gonna let this server come for a few minutes to, um, if they have any questions.
Thank you, thank you. I really appreciate this time that you've given me. I do intend to return tomorrow because I believe it's something that the entire community, we're hoping the entire community to become involved. My name is Maggie Drake Peterson. As many of you know, I'm a retired circuit court judge out of Michigan, but I, my hometown is Orville, Alabama. And I have been appointed the executive director for the Weed and Seed. As you may or may not be aware, as you know, the city of Salma in Dallas County received a one million dollar grant, but it's more or less specifically with police, um, the VA's office, and the Dallas County Sheriff's Department. But my arm of weed is, we're trying to get the community as a whole together. And I come before you today to ask you several things, to ask if you would cooperate with me and help me with this. I think we can make it work, because I love this city. Even though I'm not, I don't live in Salma, I love this city. Everyone that knows me during the entire time I was, I was gone, they called, they said I was from Salma, but anyway, this is the place that I know and love. Before we ask, the weed, as you know, the Weed and Seed Initiative that was, uh, that we received was a means by which the city of Salma and Dallas County could coordinate their efforts to communicate, to energize the community and to, uh, specifically to eliminate specific situations that was, that has been occurring in the city of Salma. That is the weed part. The seed part is, as you, uh, I'm sure you'll note, is a total community engagement campaign. And this is what I'm asking each of you individually to do. I'm asking each of you individually to call a community meeting in your ward. Let me and my forces, and I have two honeybees. Uh, you may or may not be aware of the honeybees, but you know what honeybees are, what they do? Honeybees get things done. Honeybees are one of the most industrial insects on the face of the earth. And what we're doing is that we want you to call your community meeting. Let us come out and talk to them, let them get engaged. Because no matter what you do, how much money you throw into project, if you don't have people who are interested in making it work, it is not going to work. I'm asking you to call your meeting. Let us come out, let us talk to them about their impact that they can have as a community to get things done. The, uh, the community can be the eyes and ears of the police. Whatever is going on, and you yourself, as an individual, can, uh, we all together can get this done. So I'm asking you to call to me, then call me. I sent you all an email. If you didn't get it, let me know, I'll be happy to send another one out. Did everyone get the email that I sent?
No, I didn't.
I did not get one. You did not get one? Did I mail it to you? I would get your email address before I leave, because apparently I have an old email address. But I send out emails to everyone telling them what the purpose of my prayer and to ask for your assistance so that we can revitalize the city that we live in, that we love. We can get community leaders, we can get everyone involved. We can have an impact on what's going on in our city. You can be the eyes and the ears, uh, of your city. If you see someone dropping paper, the little child next door, tell, say to the child, Johnny, pick up the paper. I mean, this is where you live. Uh, we, we don't live on a dumpster. We live in a community that we love. So I'm asking you as city council people to get on board, if you will, and to help. Jesus, how are you? To get on board with me. If you don't mind, you schedule the meeting date, and if you will call me, I will schedule around my calendar, me and my honeybees will come out, and we will talk to your people, our people. Because we're in this together. We didn't all come up on the same ship, but we're in the same boat. And it affects you, it affects me. So we ask you to call a community meeting for your community, your wards, your specific ward. Let us come out, let us help them get organized, let them tell them things to look out for, and how we intend to go from here. Um, do you need any additional information? Is there anything else I can say, or anything I can tell you to make you understand what this is about? We, we, it's about seeding, make it out of town first. I don't want to pick up the newspaper anymore and have them telling us that we remember one of the worst cities in the United States of America. This is about being positive. The other thing I'm asking, and, and this isn't a sign, I'm asking you as the city council to, um, give us a city ordinance officer to write ordinances, code ordinances. If you don't have someone to, to write the tickets or to endorse them, at least write the ticket to get their attention, no matter how much trash you pick up, the next day it's gonna be down again. So I'm asking you to, to consider that. Are there any questions you might have off me?
Councilwoman Benjamin.
And by the way, I am a retired Detroit Police Sergeant, and I worked with the community many years there, in addition to being on Wayne County Circuit Court bench for 24 years, so I got a little experience dealing with the community.
Councilwoman Benjamin.
Thank you, Judge Drake. Uh, so we have an executive director out here for us. Thank you so much, I appreciate it. You are willing to work the weed and seed program in Salma, Dallas County. So what area is this, uh, I got the weed and seed before I worked on the program. I, I helped with program, if there's any word. Hey, what area is it covering?
We're gonna do wards one through eight.
So it's super weed and seed?
Uh, yes.
Okay, it's a difference, okay.
It's doable.
Okay.
It's doable, because if we are working, if we are working together, uh, the meeting, you will schedule your meeting at the time that's convenient for you, the time that you know. I'm sure that you must have some monthly meetings.
I had my weed and seed meeting already with federal agent Brown, and I wish I knew at that time who were the executive director. I think I, I've had one already.
What, do you have a monthly, a bimonthly?
I have a quarterly, and most do. Well, you know, I can't speak very well, but most do have a quarterly. Uh, but, um, when the agents weren't here in town, I immediately scheduled my meeting and invited Agent Brown to come to, uh, talk. So I didn't know we were doing super weed and seed, I'm glad to know that. That's, that's a few dollars, 1.5 million is a few dollars to do the entire seed. So, but I'm glad we got that much, um, the trash violations. Uh, the thing about trash violations is the same thing about lawn violations, they're hit and run. Uh, it's a hit and run violation still unless we can catch these people in the act. We just have to pick up the trash, and who are we gonna write the ticket to? We have to figure that out, uh, unless we can catch them in the act.
I understand the way it works.
So, so, okay, I'm just letting you know, you said you want code enforcement and writing tickets. Uh, they can write tickets if they actually see it, so. And we wish that we could do it on hearsay, but we can't do it on hearsay. And, uh, I too, I, I want Salma, Alabama, and Alabama itself to be the top of these polls, but I don't believe all these polls, uh, at all, uh, when they come out. And some polls, uh, tend to like to put us wherever they wanna put us. So I, I always say, who, who made the poll? Who drafted the poll? Who answered the poll? And so, yeah, I know we're down at the bottom somewhere, and I want us to rise to the top. I'll have another meeting, uh, and bring you over so you can talk with them again. And you may have new information that you can share with them, and I'll give you that day. I didn't get your email, so I need to give you my correct email address. I'll write it down for you.
Okay, and the other thing is that I don't believe we let other people define who we are.
Absolutely not.
Uh, you know, uh, you can, you can, you can, you can print a story. It doesn't make it true because it's in the print. I think we need to define and show the positive things that are going on in Salma.
Yes.
So I said, let us define who we are. And that is the position that I tend to take about most things.
Thank you, Judge President.
Councilwoman Jackson.
Thank you, Judge Drake.
Thank you.
First, let me, thank you for accepting this. Uh, you came home to retire and to, uh, you know, relax, and here you are again, fighting for us, uh, and so we appreciate that. We appreciate your leadership in this position. And, um, after getting your email, I've set up a meeting for, um, June 22nd at 6:00 PM.
June, what day is it?
Yes, maybe, it's a Thursday.
What time?
Uh, 6:00 PM.
Gotcha.
Currently I have two locations, because I haven't heard from the city. Um, but in case I don't by tomorrow, I'll make sure that I announce during our announcements where it will actually be and give you a copy of that flyer. But thank you so much.
Thank you.
And, um, we're looking forward to the seeding, because we've actually experienced some of the weeding. Um, things are a little quieter, things are, um, less cumbersome. Um, and so, um, I've seen just in, in the court, how many cases are being prosecuted federally or how many cases, um, are coming to the court. And so I, I see what law enforcement is doing in, in the weeding. And if, just like you say, we can be implanting some good things, um, back, then we'll, we'll see some good fruit. And so I'm excited.
Thank you so much.
Councilwoman Thompson.
Wait, let me just say one thing. Will you email me, let me know a specific where it's going to be?
Yes, make sure we get a copy of that flyer.
Thank you.
You know the process, Tom? Thank you, Judge.
Thank you very much, allow me to grace your counseling today.
Judge, if anybody needs, if they're in that corner, I mean, Judge, I'm sure you, you know, you can do that.
Okay, thank you.
I'm gonna write it all here, so you can have it all in one place.
Thank you.
And I think you need Councilwoman Thomas.
I do. Thank you.
What's next?
Ms. Stone?
Oh, okay. The last, about a month ago, about a month ago, I came to you and I told you that I was Alabama State Representative for our little miss. And several of, and several of you had questions about donations. And at that time, I did not have the answers to that. But now I do. If, if you want to donate officially, this is the form. And if, and if you wanna donate as an individual, I can accept anything but chickens and beans. Wait, just maybe the chicken, not the beans.
Can I get a copy of that? I, this, my, I think.
We'll pass them around tomorrow.
Yeah, I can't get a copy, I can't get the copy to work.
You can have, you can have the copy.
Okay, thank you, sure. We're so excited, and where do you go, where do you go?
I go there, I leave July 14th, and that ends the 21st.
Well, we're all gonna be ready for July.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. We'll, we'll pass the hat around.
Thank you, Sarah.
I heard, Sarah, I heard you on, uh, Maggie's show, and you did an excellent job. I first, when I first turned it on, I thought I had my own challenge, I was listening to a good one of the bear. That's, 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 um, hey, you did an excellent job, I just want, and hey, you too. I just want, you made this for me.
Yeah, Hillary was, Hillary was saying language into me. All the time, don't try and tell me what to say.
And hey, you did a good job, and so did you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, y'all.
Good evening.
I'm here just to let y'all fire away, uh, questions. So I think one of the things we've dealt with lately is the keys. So I'm gonna turn that over to Mr. Thomas and then let her talk about that. I think it's good to have some open discussion about some of the keys to the public building. I think at some point, y'all voted to put them in the clerk's office, or y'all actually. And so, I thought it'd be best, and talk to Mr. Thomas, and Council President, uh, Booey, that we kind of discussed the best way to do this, keys to the public buildings.
First, first of all, I wanna say this to you, this panel. We have been talking about, um, our public buildings, with the keys, uh, giving in, and other people trying to get the keys to get work done. We have tried to work, um, I'm about teamwork. Uh, we have a committee, plus, uh, we have a daily day operation running, which is the mayor. Where we have, the mayor have his, uh, directors over the keys. And it's come to a point where, uh, for months and months, we have been talking about this, going backwards and backwards and forth. And it've come to the place where, that we have tried to, I believe in working together, which we have a mayor that comes to the meeting to hear, so we can work this out, to move forward. Um, it's come to this point that, uh, we all know that, uh, what is said about the keys, that the council have the right. But it's not about the council giving the keys, it's about the council, the committee, uh, getting the building, like things that needs to be done, works needs to be repaired. Uh, you need to go in, you know, we, we lease our buildings out, and we rent our buildings out to people that, uh, have events. And when things are not right, that these events that they have, they come back complaining and following the council. But they, we should not be the one to be blamed. Uh, we don't run a day-to-day operation when they have events, they're saying the buildings are not clean. Uh, we put them, we made a policy that they would have to get their own, uh, security, their own insurance, and they would have to clean up, uh, clean the building up, and it'd be clean for the next. So, we came to this point that we asked the lead, Rob asked the lead, and I think Rob, uh, the day me and Councilwoman Benjamin was in the office, you know, Councilwoman Benjamin made the statement that, that the keys, uh, to be put, where the council, when you needed to get in the building for something, you know, you check out. But I think Rob misunderstood.
Woody.
Woody, well, I'm saying, Rob, you know, you talked to Rob, and me and you both. Rob, uh, made the statement that, you know, we could do it like, uh, with President Booey being the, I'm just, I'm just saying that right, but then I had to clarify to get, to give him the whole detail. He was saying like that if, uh, just like we have a contractor right now, okay? This is unnecessary, I have never seen anything like this. We have a contractor that wants to go in the building. We have did the contract, voted, he's, he's got the contract to do the repair. His contract started on June 3rd. He has not been able to get in the building, okay? We have been dealing with, uh, the mayor, which the mayor refused to sign the contract, and then we had to go through President Booey, which we had an ordinance already in place. And now, we, he, he wanted to see the contract, he seen the contract after everybody signed. So, Mr. Stud, here today's date is what date, the, the 8th?
June 10th.
June 10th, but the contract started June 3rd. Uh, I saw Mr. Stud, I was very concerned, because, uh, we have been through so much process to get this up off the ground, and here we keep getting a stumbling block. Someone keep blocking us, and, uh, it's dealing with the keys. It's dealing with the day-to-day operation, who's the mayor, he's the executive, which his department head has the keys. And she's not gonna do anything unless the mayor approves it. So, my thing is this here, we need to, as leaders, according to what, uh, is required of us to do to keep this operating city building up going, we're trying to come up with, uh, a solution.
An ordinance.
An ordinance.
Okay, well, maybe what we maybe can do is let Terry Davis keep her keys, and put the keys in the clerk's office. And if I need to go through and sign off for, councilmember, you go in to the bill, uh, I sign off.
So what about if we have a contractor? Excuse me right now, I'm having a hot flame. Uh, if, if a contractor is, uh, trying to get the keys to go in, this is a matter. A private phone. But if, right now, Mr. Stud had not been in the building yet. And I talked to him this evening, I, I, I found him, and he said, uh, that Attorney Woody had texted Ms. Terry Davis, no, for, for him.
Yeah, Mr. Stud, remember, that's right.
Yes, so, we're hoping in the morning that if, uh, he can start up off the ground to get in to do the repairs.
Yeah, so the question is, what can we do with the keys? And my understanding from Rob is, that's typical, I guess you have a department head that has the keys. But Ms. Thomas asked me, what's another option? He didn't mention that, he said you could have Woody Clark and the council president to go check him out. And I said, what about just any council member? He said, I think that's a bad policy, if you give everybody the right to do it. He didn't say you necessarily couldn't, he just said, I think it's a bad policy. Um, he suggested having it where the president could do it, but it's up to you guys. And so that's what y'all want to do. So the vote back in October of last year was to obtain keys to all public buildings, the exception of public safety, City Hall, and they shall be kept in locked, locked space in the office of the Salma City Council. Um, yeah, he thought it'd be better to do with the clerk.
I know, I'm prepared, uh, to use that for that.
Yeah, so you could do a copy there, maybe, and a copy of Ms. Davis. It's up to you guys.
I just want us to move forward, the lead, uh, as a leader, good leader, uh, making good decision on, uh, we're dealing with our city. We cannot keep, uh, being held back, uh, from operating on a day-to-day operation. We don't have, uh, when we're trying to get the building fixed. And, uh, we keep coming to a standstill, so we just need to, uh, agree to whatever Willie just said, uh, President Booey making a decision on. But we need to do, we need to move forward.
I'm not saying do, I'm saying that's an option legally.
It can be an option, but you have to do it, we are ready to move forward.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, that's why I have a hand up. Just, maybe I'll segue into that. We spent some time in, in the office, Councilwoman Thomas and I, so now we're asking, what should, what should we do? I thought we resolved that we're gonna do a resolution?
Yes.
And the keys, we're gonna be in the clerk's office?
Yes, but he had, he had, he had a concern. His concern was the question, what he just said, that each body not being controlling other keys, that we should, should have one specific person.
That's the only difference in what we talk about in your office, right? Okay, so I think the council has a problem with, uh, the president checking the keys out. So can we move with the resolution?
So can you have the back of the person decide the president, he's not available?
That would be me, the president, front end.
So what you do is have one, Ms. Ivy, and I think I have to search my cell, keep your side of me in there.
Yes.
If you can't get in touch with Ms. Davis, you know, ideally you just don't go through Ms. Davis, but.
But the resolution, we would have to be, what's up?
I can hustle, try to have ready for her, I'll hustle, I'll try.
Yeah, it's not moved ready.
Councilwoman Yelbo, Councilwoman Yelbo, and Council, Councilwoman Yelbo.
I, I was just gonna say, I could just, for whatever it's worth, I feel like the chairman of the building committee, particularly right now at this time, while the council is having, or the building committees having, takes such an active role in, in when somebody wants to rent out the buildings. And Councilwoman Thomas especially, we wouldn't have gotten, if it weren't for her, our city buildings would be falling in, and I'm just gonna tell you that right now. And I think the, the, the chair of the building committee ought to have access to it, to, that's, that's just my two cents. Word.
That's fine.
I think you probably could.
We add that chair, we, I'm.
I think you probably could.
Yeah, so the chair, every, I'll call it stuff with it.
His concern mostly was giving everybody access, and they have more authority than like a private citizen. That was his work, it runs to now, that section of the Constitution.
Yeah, and I just, all I want us to do is, is, is start doing something good for our city. Let's, let, let this man get in here, open it up, people can rent it for weddings, people come through here for tour. Everything we got now is, if people come through, is lockdown. It, it's got a key lockdown, and our day-to-day operations, the, the person that runs this city cannot say that we have practically spent enough time trying to do this. And I hope that Woody, you, you can take this back, could you please deliver this? Uh, try to get a relationship with the, 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 that director of the public building, that, that let her understand that no one is trying to step over them. We're trying to do what's right to, to get things rolling. That's, that's all we want. We don't want, all we want is to be able to be open up so we can get things rolling.
So to basically reiterate that it's gonna valid the resolution with the calculated keys, president, 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 and the respected chairman of the public building's issue.
Yeah, so you don't have to put names in there, just decisions.
Okay. I just wanted to.
I think we can, I think we can do that.
Councilman, probably.
How's this gonna affect the rentability of the building? Again, if the contract for renting, renting the building has to originate through the department head, then getting the keys won't change the availability of the buildings, will it? Or how would that change it? Is Ivy gonna start taking contracts as well?
No, it ain't, it ain't crazy, it did have. If you, if you kind of like, you don't understand what we're trying.
I think I do, but I'm just asking that question as a follow-up. Is that the plan, is that your plan, is to follow up with that, that, that idea about having contracts independently of the department?
Well, I've already had started working on, well, we did one already.
Okay.
We, we already did one contract, but working through to try to get the building for him to get in the building. And we have to go through the department.
Right.
Okay, so this is why we at this point, uh, that if we put this in, what we're trying to do now.
The keys.
There, yes, and then it shouldn't be no problem with no one working for trying to get, get them.
But if the mayor has been the obstacle, to your point, in getting a contract signed through the department head, how is getting the keys gonna facilitate the department head signing that contract?
So I, I think we're talking about two different things here, um, it's just what I'm understanding. She's, uh, Councilwoman Thomas is stating that when there's work that needs to be done, when there are problems, that the council members can say, uh, we can go in and identify if there are issues, like the accusation that has come to, um, our attention at the convention center. Um, so, um, she could go in, into the building, determine if there's a problem, and then go to the department head, and did you realize, what you're talking about, what I believe is contracts to rent the building out.
Uh huh. You said open the buildings up, is what you said or say? That's, when that say that means, a value of renting is what I think that is.
I think what, based on what I'm understanding, I'm in that department committee, when she said open the building up, I thought. I thought she was specifically, specifically speaking to the Smithman Building, if the contractor's in that building, so it can now be opened up, it can, it can be repaired and opened up. So I don't think she's talking about.
She said weddings and things like that as well.
People.
I was just confused, I was trying to clarify.
Without an acquisition, without an acquisition in the, um, the building being fixed properly, then you can't open it up to have a wedding in August, uh which someone came to us actually while we were there at the building, um and asked about a wedding in August, and their response, they couldn't open the building because they did not have air in the building. And so, what she's saying is maybe we can get it rented out for some of those functions this summer, if the election get it done.
Okay.
That's what I understood.
Yeah, that's, that's what I said.
With the assumption that the department head will actually facilitate.
Let me put it in the answer, yes, that's what I'm thinking about. Okay, so that's not all that we're talking about, thank you.
No, I know that, I was asking about the whole.
Yeah, I'm gonna ask the girl part too, because getting access to see what's wrong with the building is not all our committee is talking about. We're also talking about being able to get into this building for a committee meeting. Being able to schedule and reserve uh buildings for the public. So, we have a person over there that's being paid, that is being paid to, to uh schedule a date for a citizen and all of those types of things. And so, when she, we can't find her, get in touch with her, then we find this guy. And say, hey, they're not opening the building for us, and maybe somebody gave them an order not to open. It's scheduled, we took their money, and then you go with the key. So we're not talking about just access to a building to, to check on the structure. We're talking about everything that is needed for something else. And I wanted to ask your question, cause it was not answered.
Right.
So, yes, she is supposed to continue to take those reservations.
Okay, so.
All of that.
And then if she's not there, then because the council president can sign a contract.
We need to have a right to.
He could sign a contract.
We can fix that problem. We can fix that problem.
That's why I'm just looking at the whole.
Wait, let me, let me ask that. So if we can't get in touch with her to determine the availability of a building, are we gonna just go ahead through the council president and schedule, which may present us with a conflict because we.
That's not what I think. That's not what we.
I'm, I'm trying, because that's what I understood. That's what I understood.
You understood it from me?
I understood from his question.
From his question.
You.
Right, see, you can make it there, cause it should fix, but if we can't rent the building, what difference does it make it there?
We, we, we're supposed to get the building rented, because that's her job.
I know that, I know that that's her job, it's like maintaining the business.
Uh, make it simple, Councilwoman Thomas, you and I go over there and talk to Terry Davis and work out all the logistical things.
Just a period, yeah.
Period.
Period. Come on. All right, listen, Woody.
Next, there's a laundry list of things we're looking at, but I'm just gonna run over a couple.
Go ahead.
So, President Bowie and I are also looking at, um, I won't go into detail, but an injunction for certain businesses not paying sales tax.
Yep.
So, we're looking in that process, I think. We're looking into the process of filing injunctions against businesses not paying sales tax.
We have one that's supposed to go to council tomorrow.
I don't know.
Then you can come with that.
You got the truth, go ahead and say it.
So we're gonna look at that.
Yeah, sure.
President Bowie and I are talking with uh, I think it's Ms. Watkins. What are the things they'll do with those? Yeah, so. Looking at that, um, also looking at, I believe, it's my opinion, y'all can hear my, hear, hear my earmark, some of this lodging tax for roads and streets, things like that. So I'm looking into that. Um, President Bowie asked me to look at that.
He asked you to look at roads and streets?
Yes.
I was asking you to look at that, too.
Question was, can we earmark certain muddy, the lodging tax legally for roads and streets?
Oh, legally.
It's up to y'all.
Are we charging that capital amount or are we charging that money?
I think it was.
It varies, ten, fifteen thousand dollars a month, but I'd say uh the capital is fortunate, because if you look through that comprehensive planning, we got several streets on a five thousand, uh ten thousand, and with that amount of community on the average, in the past, we looked at roughly about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Then if you look at the gas tax that was presented, that's what we was gonna present by two hundred thousand dollars a year. The projection of that amount. But it can also, with capital improvement, like if we need some uh intercity equipment, we can use that to fund it for that also.
I just wanted to tell you, I'm yesterday, I was really, I wrote a lot of money, compared to speaking about the needs and fixing the infrastructure of our city. But I guess.
This is starting, I did.
I just wanna make sure we use our money and wires, that's all.
But I think you should put the money, you know, that was a lot, right?
That's what I'm answering why I'm here.
What was the legal answer?
Well, he gonna get an ordinance, we can, but you want to get an ordinance.
But Mr. President, I have some of these, there are a couple of things on businesses that the city itself, the president would do business with. And I, I don't, if they're not paying their taxes, I don't think that one would be doing business, would make a big money to the public. I don't, I, I don't cotton to that, and I'm just gonna do that right now.
And that's why we waiting on the numbers. Uh, within the next council meeting, we will be calling, uh need to bring forth these business before the council, we can resort to this.
Matter, well, matter of fact, I don't think we get, I don't think we get, I don't think they oughta get any money from the city itself, if they not paying their taxes. Sales tax, cause actually, that's not their money anyway. It belongs to the city itself, they're just a holder name.
There's a process, we can't just.
Just take one.
We gotta file things.
Uh, sure, I understand that, but.
But you're saying new business, that's different.
Right, I know, but, but, but I'm saying, when, you know, it's, that is a process, but when it comes to having, when they come to get their paycheck, I think we oughta say, uh wait a minute, let's correct setups, and make, whatever's necessary. Uh, you know, I don't know if this is an executive session thing or not, or maybe we need to call them and have an executive session with them to have a prayer meeting with them, have a word of prayer with them.
Four left.
Maybe we need to talk to them face to face.
Yeah, I talked to the first one, um, and the fourth one. And I haven't been set up with the last.
You said the first one and four.
Mm-hmm. Met with the uh, the fourth one on Friday.
Cause they're, they're plenty of good folks that do.
They just changed it over. Oh, this is right here. Councilwoman, Councilwoman Thomas.
You know, while we on this subject, you know, I, I was listening. I was listening to the news this week where Millbrook, a long time business owner, like some of these business have paid their taxes. You know, the mayor and the council didn't have a problem with them. They have been doing the same thing what you've been doing, meeting and RDS and everybody, and we haven't got, haven't gotten the, the tax money back that they owe. They closed, they, they closed their business down till they come up with the money. They, they closed them down till they come up with the money. And I think if you have been meeting, we have brought RDS in here to talk with them, and you said you have met several times, made the fourth time, and uh well, a lot of us go to these places, sit down and eat, and we pay tax, charge us taxes on the food, and then you not even paying the taxes to the city. I think they got, they gotta wait too long.
There.
I do agree. Councilwoman.
You, you have this too? This list was, one bright side of this is, this list has reduced tremendously. Like, I, I don't know if you saw, what we started from. It was like almost the whole town, Salma, Alabama, um, and I'm sure you are aware. This list has reduced tremendously. Now, on this first sheet, uh the first one, each time the list has been reduced, this one has remained on the list, okay? Uh, the second one, I don't think we're ever gonna get one penny, one dime, one article from, all right?
The one, the wait one.
The second one, look at it, and you'll see what I'm talking about on the front page. Go to the front page and just say wow. And you see that list right here, right about up in here. You see about four or five names? I don't think we're ever gonna collect on them. And the third one, I don't know if it still exists.
It's just me.
Uh, I don't know if it still exists, number three, uh, I know a very important person is deceased now.
They changed it over, someone else has found it.
And then the fourth one, uh, we need to just go talk to them.
Okay.
You did already?
Right.
You went to talk to them Friday, okay, so I think they'll do the same thing with the last one. Those two, I think you just need to go talk to them, but uh
We asked you for the last.
Each time this list has reduced, that first one has remained on the list without disappearing.
We'll work with RDS, and my experience is when you write a letter and file an injunction, people talk a lot quicker.
This list is reduced, I'm telling you, this, this thing used to be thick.
Councilwoman.
And also, um, with one, with the, cause, I think y'all need to, need to check back with this here, cause this, this young man right here, he, he pays his, um, Stacy.
It wasn't already, maybe eleven, seven, four, two, right here.
This number fits with their name, you're talking to the number.
Yeah, two, seven, nine, four, eight, number eleven.
Two, seven, nine, four, eight, okay.
Uh, you know, before the last time, you know, we have somebody here, don't we have somebody here in, in our, in the city itself collect uh the taxes, working with, on the RDS, with the young lady that comes here?
Mm-hmm.
Don't we have somebody yourself?
Yes.
Okay, well, this, she made a mistake the last time with this uh person, because he always pays his taxes. So they need to check that.
And that's why I said, do a cross-reference, because one of the particular ones I made for Friday, uh I supposed to bring some information to them, give it to them, uh as it relates to them, you know, the taxes.
Yeah, because he said, he, he deals with, he, he deal with somebody here through, through RDS that he pays his taxes to.
All right, any other questions?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman.
I have, I have a. I agree with McCollum, this list compared to the speaking, I, I can recall, come here, it was well over five hundred thousand dollars in the business.
Yes, yes.
And closing RDS John and Martha John and getting it down. You know, and, and, and bothers me to continue to see such a business number one, uh every time, business number uh four and five.
Okay.
You know, uh, that, that, that should be no excuse for these businesses being delinquent in a manner that they are. And of course, uh, we're looking at the attorney, hopefully, to pursue uh right after term, whether they were having an option of there to admit taxes or close their doors. We're rather than admitting taxes. But we cannot continue to allow them to be the void, the path, what is uh legally the goal to this city. And we just need to just stand firm in doing business with uh the businesses uh that collect taxes and, 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 but yet they don't admit it. So let's, 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 uh, let's, let's stay firm, and let's do what we gotta do to make the dollar that is due to this city.
Yeah, one thing, if I go to Councilwoman Youngblood, we can command RDS, that they have a coop over three hundred thousand dollars. So that's, that's a good start.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Councilwoman Youngblood.
Uh, I, I, I want to ask Mr. Jones this, and I'm certainly not for, for kicking the dog when they're down at all, cause I, I, in the country, I thought, in my life, I've certainly been down, but um there are people on this west that have been up here and I just think haven't done or honored the agreements or whatever, but um, is there any reason that this is private information? Privileged information and not public information?
I think it's probably public, but.
Yeah, it can be, doesn't just have a, uh, council decision because people got upset, and we think we didn't want their feelings hurt.
I assume it's public.
I think we oughta have a wall, cause it involves tax money. I think we oughta have a wall of shame on our website and publish delinquent taxes, if we're not gonna do anything that doesn't cost anybody, because the public need to, ought to know. You know what, I don't, I, you know.
Before we do it, it's a lot of.
And also, and, and give them a, give them a chance. I think, you know, say, by July the first, if the, the people, taxes that are still delinquent, people that aren't paying taxes, there's gonna be a wall of shame, cause it's not their money to begin with, it's not like, it's not like they're delinquent paying their newspaper bill, or their drugstore bill, or something like that. They are not heading over our money that they collected on our behalf.
I think, far as so, for the jobs, that's gonna be part of the level that he brought, of time.
We want to follow the junction.
That's part of the service. Yeah, that's part of the business. And also, we're trying to get the total amount that they're.
You know what the amount.
We don't know the total amount, so we're just waiting for RDS to get that extra two or something, then the next forty thousand. All right, any other questions? Thank you, thank you.
Oh, uh, uh, we need to do your letter, I don't know who, this is for you or Attorney Woody. Um, tax and license, or whoever's supposed to cross-reference this, this. Make sure, whether we get them July first, or whatever day we give them, make sure this list is a correct and true list before it goes out to the public, because it's one thing to put an accurate list out, it's another thing to put an inaccurate list out, like she said, this gentleman pays his taxes on a regular basis, so we need somebody to cross this list.
I talked.
That's why I don't say the names, because it could be an inaccurate list.
Go ahead, you're a hunter here.
Yes, so we need somebody to cross-reference this, to make sure it's accurate and true.
I talked about on Friday that we're getting Miss Wade, and make sure that they cross-reference to make sure we all know.
And what you can.
I talked about on Friday about that. Any other questions for Attorney, Councilwoman?
Yeah, before we leave, uh, we need to discuss about the Dallas Academy building, so we can be, be, so we can all, the council can know this. Uh, with the Dallas Academy building, with uh the employees being laid off, uh, you know, it's time for the summer, uh,
Art.
Art camp. But right now, we've come to, it's a, uh, it's come to a standstill that we have to make a decision. Um, Candy used to be the, worked for the city that was working with the art camp. And I just really found out that art camp is, is, uh, is, is a part of the city. It's, 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 uh, it worked through, the city sponsored this, uh, art camp. So, I just found out too, that when Candy spoke the last time about uh when it was gonna open up, was it gonna be opened up by June the 17th? Right now, Candy is, uh, is not employed by the city, and uh she's still laid off, and it was run according to, by the employee for the city. So now we have to come to a conclusion on how we're gonna uh do the art camp.
Well, let me ask you, Attorney, with uh Ms. Duncan, I mean, with Ms. Harris out there, and she's been running for the last several years, keep in mind we got several employees that's been laid off, and that can be some liability issues. Could it be possible, maybe, you can contract, do a contract or something?
That's what I would suggest, do it some sort of contract.
And also, her, right now, her unemployment has run out, so she's no longer uh employed by the city, because her unemployment is gone. And uh, so we gotta come to a way that I hate to disappoint the kids, you know, because this is something that they, I didn't know that the city has been doing this for, for some years.
Could you look into maybe outsourcing, do a contract?
Yeah, that's what I would suggest, is doing this contract, like you hire an independent contractor to do it. Since she's not an employee of the city anymore.
She's not, it's certainly dead.
She's not employed, she.
And then, and then, and what makes it such a possible, definitely, you know, brand money involved.
And that's, that's why I have.
They're too great, actually. And I, I thought there was, I also thought there was this one. So I talked to one of the, yeah, I talked to one of the, I think it's Tom Bigby, and they said, you can do that in a contract, it's fine. I haven't talked to the elementary arts council, cause I just found out.
So it's another one?
It's another one.
The candy cap guy, I would keep him contacted by sale.
And Ms. Duncan, I spoke today, and so I, I understand it all.
Who wrote it?
I don't know.
Candy, you know, you did.
Councilwoman, maybe, Councilwoman, maybe, Councilwoman.
That, that's why my hand was there, because um, we, we have money that has been taken in the name of the art camp. We have a line, is it a line item, a treasure for art camp? And you have a specified line item, where we were the agent for that money, uh, for art camp?
I wasn't aware of the grant, like, cause I was not here, but.
Okay.
But we do have a. But we do have a line item, it's a budget.
So I know there's some roll over money that they came to ask our permission to use, and, and it is theirs, and the other thing that this council agreed to some time ago, I don't know if it was implied, or if we took a vote on it, but we agreed to partnership, uh, with those who are in the, in the area of education and arts, and if they became a partner of ours, then you can use, you could use the building, uh, in that partnership. Uh, I don't remember if it was implied or voted on, but I could find out from Ivy, uh, concerning that part right there.
So, I, I may have a contract for y'all, hopefully, because it starts next week, and, uh, I mean, I hope to get one for y'all tomorrow.
Yeah, yes, ma'am, and I want to make sure that everybody knows, that Ms. Duncan took the initiative to find money, when she was afraid that that art camp and program might be in jeopardy. She, and it more than covers, well, the cost of the camp, I mean, yeah, I, we know that it more than covers, I want everybody to know out there, that it, that, Sarah had lost anything on the arts, and our arts camp and the ceramic program, and everything, but not only that, she went out and, and procured two grants that would do education, so that ceramic and arts department is a moneymaker for the city of Selma, not to mention, I could sit up here and just yammer ad nauseam, for what arts and education does for children, and what is done. For, right, for, for children in the city of Selma, and most of us up here have scholarship children, I know Angel and Councilwoman Benjamin has, I have, Jake Sam was asking me the other day, and I said, yes, I do every year, and so, um, anyway, uh, that, and, and I want it, I want that understood, I want to make sure everybody knows that, and, and we should absolutely make sure that Candy Duncan, I keep wanting to say Candy Cats, Lord, after all these years, does that, that just goes so well together, but Candy Duncan is, you know, does that, so.
So, Councilmember, it's a matter of, did you have your hand up, Councilwoman, I mean, I can go here.
I just wanted to say, uh, if, uh, just echoing the two of you all, because I spoke with, um, Ms. Duncan today, um, and actually had the opportunity to speak with our treasurer, she stated that last year, the revenue that was taken in from the, um, the council, ninety-nine hundred dollars, um, and we know that she secured about fifty-six hundred dollars, for, in grants, uh, that will actually cover the instructor, um, and so, uh, as you say, that there would be no cost to the city, but it's a great benefit to the city and its children, um, and so, uh, I think we all on one accord, tomorrow, this may go into consent agenda.
Yeah.
To get that contract with us.
Yeah, cause it's, it's this money, we, we, she, she did the grant, and we took in the money for that.
For, for them. That's, that's, that's the matter at hand, Councilwoman Thomas?
And another, I, 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 uh, Ms. Pete, I don't want to put you on the spot here, but I'd like to ask you, um, we, Mr. Pete?
You want me to come up and?
Yes, if he don't mind. Cause I, I with the attorney, I wanted to get this, we want to be straight with each other, uh, it was told that the, it would have been finished by maybe eleven. Okay, and I had talked to President Bowie, back here two months ago, about to send a letter to the mayor, and asking him, the, what's it? The, the people that are doing the work, it's a Love Lady, uh, Love Lady Construction, when they had a meeting, uh, we would like to be, the committee would like to be a part of this finishing up this building, we would like to know when will it be ready for the art camp. And, uh, President Bowie, did you ever send, did, did you, did you get an email back from the mayor? Okay, see, and this is what I'm saying, uh, communication to move forward with this, things that we are trying to do for the children, and for the city itself, can you tell me, when is, will the church be able to go in the Dallas Academy building, by the seventh, next week?
I, I had talked to, uh, the city attorney, and I talked to Mr. Coker, and Mr. Coker was a part of the engineering firm that had been commissioned by the city to handle the, the bid, uh, to come up with the reconstruction cost, and to manage that, uh, and according to Mr. Coker, I talked with him today, and on May the thirty-first, they did their final walkthrough.
Okay.
Everything had been done, they met with the contractor, uh, Mr. Van Daigle was there, he said, and they did a walkthrough, and approved the building at that time. And so, from their standpoint, there, the, all the construction, uh, cost, all the construction work has been done, per the specifications, uh, and it is ready for occupancy.
So.
The last leg of it is, uh, Love Lady Construction technically must advertise that they have completed the job.
Can they, when will they advertise?
Uh, that'll be, I think, probably, we'll do that this week, now, I, I do not think that that has anything necessarily to do with, uh, the city going ahead and occupying the building, it is, all repairs have been done.
All right, thank you, so they will be able to go in?
I will not be able to answer that, because I don't, no, I'm just saying it's ready to occupancy, I think that's a good question.
So who do we, who do you find out from?
Mr. Coker.
Where, where is Mr. Coker?
He is, he was the engineering firm, to handle, uh, the, the, the letting of the bid, and the overseeing of the construction, so, Mr. Coker's, uh, position to me was, I've done the job that the city asked me to do, my task is completed.
So he's complete?
Right.
So now we're waiting on Love Lady?
Love Lady has completed their task also.
So. Oh, we just waiting on somebody to open the doors?
It would appear that way.
Okay, well then, President Bowie, and Attorney, Attorney Woody, can you please, uh, uh, talk to the mayor, since you, you rep- you representing the mayor, in the city council? Okay, you representing all of us, so can you please tell him, everything is walkthrough, everything is done, can you please release the keys? Well, we can't release the key till you get the contract done.
But she gonna get, we gonna poke on the contract tomorrow, is that not correct?
And can you say that's respect, that date, that after we vote on it, that miss, they can open it up and go in, and if y'all need me to help clean up dust and sweep, I'll be right there with y'all, thank you.
Cause I pause that grant, it's admin costs too, right?
Probably.
Administration costs.
Administration.
Can you please deliver?
You have a contract tomorrow?
Yes.
We put it, and we put it on fast track, man.
Can you still part of the terms? I'll, I'll try to help with it. All right, don't, don't throw anything at it, but, so, the, this was an issue I thought about too. Again, we have an independent contractor in a building that the city owns, how do we do it? I'm trying to make, I'm trying to figure out a way to make it happen, cause it's not like an employee in a building. Uh, Rob and I talked again today. So, most people that use a building, you, they pay for it, right, but this is administering a city grant, so we're trying to figure out a way so you can just use the building. Um, there's one way you can do it, it's have a public hearing, you have to say it's for economic use, and it's for the city and everything, so I'm, I'm working on it, I'm working on it.
Admin, this is admin fee?
Yeah, maybe, I, I'm trying to figure it out.
That, that, that's what I was talking about, so, we partner in education, that, that's what we do, and when those that we partnership have those type workshops that they have, then you get the use of the city building, because now we have become partners, uh, the city is a partner with this art camp, so that's what I'm talking about. That I was gonna say, it was an implied, or voted on, but either way, we, we've done it with the seven city schools, our, our education workshop, we've done it with the Jubilee, with their education workshop, when we decide to become a partner.
Yeah.
Then, our end of the deal is, we provide a venue.
Yeah, I'm looking, I'm looking, I'm, I'm gonna try to make it, we'll.
Also, if you look at, partner with a nonprofit.
Yeah.
That can be a lot of.
But if she's on, with the independent contractor, I mean, that's probably the smoothest way to do it.
All right, that's perfect.
Smoothest way to do it.
All right.
So I'll get y'all the contract tomorrow.
Now, any other questions? Go ahead, Counselor.
Counselor, could you, FYI, Council, where we are with this inventory, um, issue, returning this starting?
Yes.
You know, the question was asked by the president, to the Council of the American, to put that on the, just to inform us where we are.
Yes, so, and I talked to Mr. Wayne, too, the bid does have to be done, it's over fifteen thousand dollars, I think it's like twenty-five thousand dollars, and it's kinda, it's an inventory, so it's kind of in a gray area, I think you are a bit of that.
We'll get with the clerk, I mean, it's way, uh, talking to clerk, moving forward with, sending her an email, that's what I'm moving forward with our, uh.
Uh, with, with the, and I think, Counselor, could you, rather than hiring an inventory clerk, we opted to go with the annual, uh, inventory being done by the same company for a minimal fee, uh, should that be included in the bid as well?
Okay, send her, yeah, include, yeah, ask that man, that, uh, maybe, so.
All right, any other questions for Attorney, Councilwoman?
Actually, this is, Counselor. Should we go ahead and put on consent agenda, that, uh, we partner with the art camp, and the building is, um, free, now, or the utilization? So, it, because if we do that, then we don't have problems later, and we can't get in, because it, because we've done it before, and so we.
Way of the fees, you believe?
Way of the fees for the building, so now.
So the kind of service with the partnership?
We're providing the venue and the partnership.
Right.
So we include the fees, so they can get the money that they want, yeah.
I mean, we, we do it with, reading this from the bill.
Yeah, it's okay, we just need, we just need the attorney to write it up.
I mean, right now, I'd like to look into it more, but I'll, I'll have an answer tomorrow.
Well, we're gonna be partners with them. Okay.
Any other questions?
From a legal standpoint, I'm not, Rob didn't think you could do it that way, but I'm trying to find another avenue to do it.
He said.
Uh, he thought that he had to have, we had to have a hearing, but y'all done in the past, I can look and see how you did in the past. Um. In the book here? Yeah, yeah, but I, I'm gonna try to figure out. So.
So lots of want to have a building for free, uh, that is partner with us, we do.
I think we have to have a public hearing.
Rob, so if the building, believe, I was nervous about it.
Who is Rob at the lady? He doesn't make any.
No, you're not, you're not, you're not.
We're not, I never talked to him.
Also, you did that. Counselor, like, Counselor Woman Jackson, we do have the education, but yeah.
I wanna get them in the building too, so I'm gonna try to figure out a way to do it.
Wait.
But we gotta do it.
You want one?
Yeah, we gotta do it.
Yeah, we can wait buildings, you know that, right?
I'm gonna look into it, I'm gonna look into it.
Let's set up policy.
Yeah. We don't, we wait buildings fees all the time.
I mean, you know, some of the don't use for the HR, it was to use convention.
And we partner with education, which is why we have a board.
I'm not saying you can't, I'm just saying, I don't have an answer right now, to it, yeah. That is looking at strictly the legal.
Right. Cover us.
I'd like to live the law, I said, stay.
All right, any other questions for?
I do have a question, can you tell?
If we go to the league, we don't have another, we don't.
Counselor Woman Jackson?
Can you tell me where we are with the, on this building, I know the problems that we're experiencing with getting the work done, um, and so I'm not, I, I know it's in capable hands, and so, um, cause she caused me enough fussing, um, so, I, that's not what I'm, um, here to discuss, what I'm here to discuss is, when the work is done, have you spoken with the mayor, how are we gonna get this building open, um, and running, open, running, um, is he looking at opening it at all part-time, housing volunteers? Or have we looked into the public-private partnership with the, uh?
Are you talking about getting in and fixing the building? Are you talking about getting in and fixing the air conditioning and all that?
No.
No, you're talking, yeah, that's something we're looking into, too, the public-private partnership with the mall, so yeah.
Okay. So we still looking into it?
Yeah.
Haven't found any clear direction as yet?
I think we could probably do it, but. I'm gonna be, yeah, but to be careful.
Yeah, be careful.
Okay.
All right, any other questions? You off the clock now. You're walking.
Thank you.
Now, uh, I'm gonna ask Mr. Jerry Peet, if you please come forward, I know the question that came before the council again, about, about injury insurance, is required, um, I'm asking him to come forward and explain it, cause I know from my understanding, it's a risk role, but I would like to talk about it.
I think, I assume. Right, I'll try to talk loud enough where you can hear me, uh, first of all, as your agent, I will tell you that it is prudent for the city to have any third-party, independent contractor that works, or does work on behalf of or for the city, that they should carry insurance. That's, that's, that's the correct answer, okay? Now, that has to be balanced with, I think, the scope of work, uh, the amount of contracting, and the city, and I think the council, or the, uh, of the mayor can have some, uh, some leeway there. But I would, I would tell you, what has come up, for example, if, if, let's say that you hire me to cut the grass, cause that's usually something that usually comes up, okay? And it's a small contract, three hundred dollars, and I'm cutting the grass, and my landlord then throws a rock out, hits a small child, puts their eye, and I use that because that's exactly what has happened, not here, but in, in other, in other, other areas. If that third party that is dancing, is going to be looking for, for their, you know, for their billy injury, and so, if the party, if Jerry Peet, grass cutting, didn't have insurance, then where are they gonna go? They're gonna go to the city, and the city is, because they're saying, the city's got the money, they've got deep pockets, and, to be honest, the, uh, uh, AMIC would respond in that particular case, but that's not, again, what is prudent for the city, in cases in which you need to have that third-party purchasing insurance, that independent contractor, uh, you know, the cost, the annual cost for a grass cutter, to get a half a million dollars worth of liability insurance, is probably, I was just, wrote one today, and it was four hundred dollars, four hundred and four dollars, to be exact, so, it's not, uh, a substantial amount of money, I know that, uh, to be honest, I didn't realize it was that economical, like, cause I thought we were at a five hundred dollar premium, or even seven fifty, and of course, the larger the, the individual, the more employees they have. And so, uh, there's also the area of, of workers' compensation, that's a whole different, uh, animal, in that there must, uh, you must prove that there is a relationship between the city and that individual, in other words, it ha- they have to be deemed an employee, which means that you can hire them, you can fire them, you control their day-to-day activities, and you provide their tools necessary to complete the task. In a lot of cases, y'all are not, are not doing that, now, that's kind of a legal definition, but that's why the work comp carrier probably would not be involved in something like that, because they could prove legally, there was no relationship, but on the first part, that inter-party does not have, is not, does not have that same duty, and they can come straight to the city, so does that kind of answer the question, uh, Ms. President?
Okay, Counselor, so, Counselor Woman?
I think this is very busy, because, uh, real long in the ten of this administration, there was a warning, I don't wanna use that term, that was given to us by the artists, uh, that we were doing business that was putting the city in liability.
State.
Also, AMIC, uh, Mr. Peet, uh, was, uh, company, said, I'm asking concerns about doing business with a third-party, with any insurance, so there was a, there was a need to express their concerns, and therefore, be possible, put together, uh, by the administrative committee, which I chaired at that time, and concerned was the attorney, the, uh, the clerk, and the treasurer, uh, the committee, uh, brainstormed with how we could, uh, meet the concerns of the artists and the insurance carriers about the, uh, fact that there was a business that was getting done, and we put it in the city, and stayed up there in the library, so I'm gonna remind my colleagues, that this procedure was brought from this council, and we voted on it, and it was, it was standard law, where and how we got all that, I don't know, but I'm glad that Mr. Peet is here to reaffirm, as to what the facts on the vote states, that we cannot do with third-party, without liability insurance, putting the city at risk, so, that's where we are.
Thank you, Counselor Michelle, Counselor Woman, talk.
Well, Mr. Peet, I'm one of the ones that, uh, have a lot of grass cut, uh, my guy, he has his, he has his, what you require.
Right.
And, uh, he can hire, fire, and he can bring on, he took out, he didn't get him, he can't, he, well, he can't. And, uh, he can hire, fire, and he can bring on. He took out, he didn't get him, he can't, he, well, he can't do your insurance.
Right.
But he had his other insurance through Apple.
Right.
So everything that you require, uh, 'cause he has been working with me since I've been in the office, keeping, cutting grass. He started out like little, then lately, since November, we have a huge, a lot of grass that, uh, and he's been in lawn, his lawn service. Also, I spoke to, uh, Mr. Catlin. Mr. Catlin, uh, is a lawn service too, that, um, uh, I, I met him through another one of, uh, he asked me, he said, he, he has his lawn service, but he, he was asked, uh, through the mayor. At the time when all the grass, we, every ward to be cut, and Mr. Catlin approached me, and I asked Mr. Catlin to help me too, because we have a lot of city lots in my ward that is, is out of control. And, uh, he, he told me that, uh, he had been waiting on the mayor to give him an answer, but he told the mayor until he get approved for the contract, that he would not get the insurance until, 'cause he said that you take, that's taking on a big risk if you're not approved. But so I asked him to join me in, uh, cutting the big lots, and he said that, uh, he asked me again, he said, "Are, are you gonna get a contract for me?" I said, "Yes," he said, "because he have to go out, he have to pay this certain amount of money." So that is what's required, and now I know that if he takes on, he said he would get the insurance to help too.
Mr. Peake, you mentioned that, uh, roughly about four, four dollars annual, and then you mentioned that, that the size of the business, far as number of employees, is that figure gonna change based on getting, the more people are covered, obviously, the higher that's gonna go?
Right.
So that was kind of a sole proprietorship kind of approach there, or do you know?
I would say that's probably two people.
Okay.
Uh, two people. And, and again, I would say this is a guess. To go to three people, maybe five hundred or five fifty, you know, so...
And then the key is to make sure that that person is not received as a contractual employee, I mean, is not, they don't bridge the gap between contract and, and actual employee.
That's right.
So no logos, no shirts, it won't freak you, okay?
That is correct.
All right, the standard of business.
So that aren't linked relationships.
Yes.
Counselwoman, I'm...
Thank you, Jerry. Thank you for coming up here. I know it's just not our, you know, blessed to sit up here.
Very honored to be the city's editor.
Well, thank you, thank you. Um, well, we are blessed and happy. Um, there's someone that, that does a lot of cool stuff for, for me in particular, and, and a lot of, not, not odd jobs, but not, not things that have really hurt anybody else, who's made me some pain and damage to himself, but not that... But hey, I think the bus that he's, he's doing right now is cleaning, he volunteers, cleaning city hall, but I have, you know, tried to, and some other folks trying to help him. Is that something, and I, I understand that you're saying that's just advisable. I know when the attorney judge checked into it, Counselwoman Shaw alluded to our saying that, that it had to be done. I think he had done some checking and, and determined that, that we had to have, they had to have a business license, and they had to have liability insurance, and then attorney judge checked, I think, in order for the legal requirement to have the liability insurance, they maybe had to have reemploy. There, there were some certain requirements, so this doesn't follow into that, but I, I hear you saying it's really advisable when somebody is acting for an agent, for the, as an agent for the city, because we didn't know that they, they carried the liability of the city. Um, then certainly is, that, that, that we should require they have, and I certainly go along with that. Um, but would there be, if, if someone were to get a full insurance policy, if, if they were going to try to do that, would there be a policy for something like that, somebody that just picks up the, he uses trash cans and plates and bathrooms, and is that, is the halls and that stuff?
Yeah, I think, uh, it gets into just, uh, yeah, let's say that, that individual was making a hundred dollars a month or fifty dollars a month. Is that...
Well, that, that would be a bad thing.
And so I think that's what it gets into, is if, if the individual was, this is just my opinion, if it was a one-shot deal for fifty dollars to come pick up the grass, I think that's where some, the city certainly has that flexibility to say, "Hey, we are gonna require them in this, in this case." If that then led, they did a good job, and they said, "Hey, we wanna hire you now, and we're gonna pay you a hundred dollars a month," then yeah, I think at that time, when that triggers, we're gonna have to, you're gonna have to get insurance. Uh, I don't know if that answers your question or not, and, and so...
Well, the policy of that was what you wanted, is there... Yeah, is there, it's my policy, 'cause the, the thing is now, I'm telling them that I'm gonna have several times, and will be responsible to the end of August, so, but then I can't really...
Unfortunately, in our industry, what we've seen over a period of time is, is to issue that annual policy, uh, that those minimum premiums have gone from a hundred to a hundred fifty to three fifty, so I would say the least, uh, season would be three hundred and fifty dollars.
Gotcha, okay.
Maybe, maybe three hundred, uh, and, and we'll make sure, because they're gonna charge us, whether they work thirty days or sixty, seventy...
Sure, yeah, I'm, I'm staying.
A year, you're gonna charge us that, so you might as well get an annual policy.
Right, yeah, yeah, we love that.
And, and, you know, finally, you know, we were concerned about the little man, as people, some people were turning down, but liability could not be, uh, avoided. They must have that. And it was, uh, told to us that if they had three or more workers, then they would have to get work compensation as well, and longer they're working solo, then liability would be all required. Mr. President, while we're talking about grass cutting, could I just, since we got Mr. Peake here, can I just bring my business idea, to talk about my business idea?
Go ahead.
Uh, you know, the treasurer alerted us, uh, several minutes back, that she was, uh, that there was these five thousand dollars that could be allocated to each bus for grass cutting in our wards, because, from what young survey has been doing with that. And of course, at the same time, was trying to utilize all this money, or with, and attorney general opinion, because our, our lead, as we spoke of today, gave us an advisory saying, in their opinion, because of the urgency, because of the emergency, that, and their legal opinion that we could, however, they respectfully advised us that we should seek out an attorney general's opinion prior to, uh, using that money. And therefore, we talked about, uh, the title line as to when attorney general would give you an answer, but in the last meeting, I asked the council, there was a sense that we would not start using that five thousand dollars, because the president was gonna get on the hot mic and see if he could get an immediate answer, prior to, uh, divvying them into that five thousand dollars. In between time, Mr. President, I thought about our displaced workers. Let me tell you one thing, that still bothers me. And here's an opportunity now to bring at least thirteen of those displaced workers back to work, if not nothing, less than three months, and they will be temporarily hired, and they will be, uh, hired there to do two things. That is, on Monday, go around the citywide to pick up garbage, and transfer there to the, uh, transfer station out there to, for the one, because you can't take it to the land here, because it would be an ECA violation. And on Tuesdays to Fridays, with, uh, grass cutting and each board, with, each board have his own day, for example. I gotta put a confidence in front of you guys, so that y'all can see. On Tuesdays, uh, for, for one and eight, on Wednesdays for two and seven, on Thursday for six, and on Friday for forty-five. These thirteen employees would be hired as temporary workers, they're working thirty-two hours per week, being paid nine dollars and thirty cents an hour or something like that. That's plenty more than what they were making when they were regular workers. Right at this point, but of course, they're being rehired, not, of course, they were bringing brought in for a temporary purpose, that is to expect and not in our city, which is brought about by the condition of our city, and to the last day, because we all need this, and they will bring in addition thirteen workers, give them off, but the work, how we do this, seniority will come in first. If those, um, limits, uh, if, if other people are doing all, and there's no way to bring in, uh, uh, probably young survey worker, then we will open it up to other displaced workers, like the recreation department, cemetery department. As long as these are, as long as we bring in no displaced workers, and I know some are saying, I know the treasurer said that we got money to bring them all back. Now, that's a, well, I don't wanna fight that, 'cause that, that would not be wanting that meeting. But I think if we go ahead and, and, and be able to prove with this, we can add back the knowledge in our city, and we can add back the grass that is overtaking our, our city. So, Mr. President, this is the purpose of the schedule, that, uh, fifty, it will be fifty thousand, not forty-five, because the mayor himself would get five thousand, and it will be pooled all of our bodies, we gotta push the brain. Uh, fifty thousand, we can get this done for forty-nine dollars, and now it would sell us seven dollars and sixty-six.
Okay, hold on, before I go to Counselwoman Thomas, you know, I, I, when you first brought it to me, when I sent it today, when I ran it to you, I felt that it was a good idea, far as bringing the employees back, but my concern is, the rest of the employees, and how you did the layoff, would this also include, uh, benefits for the three months?
Is this cycle of benefits included in this way, and this way, in China, maybe, I calculated the cycle of benefit at fifteen percent, which, which made that fifty thousand dollars less, but when I brought it to her, she said it's not gonna happen, which allowed us to bring in more workers. And, uh, I, I had forecasted for twelve, but when I brought it to her, she, and I got a memo, she, she decreased the, uh, cycle, which I turned at fifteen percent, and I don't know what session she called it, but it was reduced, and it was eight, bringing thirteen, which was rather than twelve. Uh, once again, uh, and that's one of my colleagues, when of course, it was back when I asked the council to go over with some sacrifice last year, where I'm gonna give order to decide who comes back, there's a process to that. And, and as I said, it's something, we have five hundred dollar babies assembling over here in the medicine, looking for a job. We know we can't have all five hundred, but you tell all five hundred to go home, no, we don't. There's a process to this. And this is a process to bring someone out of displaced workers back, and this is money that they have, but thank God this treasurer came back, and she looked at us like that, she found a way to, we can do some things that I'm aware. Doesn't risk being liable by going out of contract, we can bring in some of displaced workers who have H thirteen, get the same, uh, most of the impact is adopted, to them as getting the workers, not getting that, and we can make our city beautiful.
I do agree with you to a degree, but that process being, you know, the pre-process have, have us a navigation there. We would have followed the same process, you know, when we laid them off. So we better be very careful, and I would advise each council member to get a copy of the personnel manual, seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen, and really try to move forward with it both. But I think, I support, you know, employees coming back, but again, it's a talent, and I hope when we look at labor, one, uh, and like you did, I guess you did, addressing my question with recreation, and also the, um, cemetery.
Mr. President, there is a legal application that more of our this to happen. All we got to do is to exist. I know that there's, I'm gonna be a one of those one of the ways, but, but that's, that's who you are. Here's an opportunity to, once again, in fact, this problem that I said, which is foliage overgrowth, garbage, and taking control, and here's an opportunity to bring back someone, although being for temporary means, working toward being, having, going back permanently, let's do this, this.
Like, like I said, have you talked to the employees, the laborers? Would they be willing to come back? Have they already been employed?
This is something that would be offered to them. Now, it may be accepted, it may not.
Right.
Well, well, once again, once again, if all of them have jobs, and there are nobody available, that we go to the public, and let the public leave these temporary jobs available for a specific task, Mr. President, all we got to do is make it happen. Now, I guess the kid got there on a general understanding, it ain't gonna happen, but this is a sign, clearly, we can make this happen.
Okay, we got Counselwoman Jackson, I'm a Counselwoman Thomas, she's a Counselwoman Jackson, and Counselwoman, we got T J B.
Well, I, 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 what, um, I understand what John Show is trying to do, but you got to remember, these are part-time people you bring back, and you, you, you use this word about seniority. Part-time people don't have seniority. Let me, let me tell you about this. I know, part-time people don't have seniority, because part-time people are not full-time people. You have full-time people that are out here, they're world grass cutters. You just can't go in here and pick thirteen, or thirteen part-time and use them as part-time, part-time people. You have to be careful, because you got, you have ninety-some employees out here, and probably half of that ninety-some employees are full-time people that have been sitting here waiting, come back to work ever since November. We cannot do, uh, it's good what you said, but you have to be careful. Part-time people are not full-time people. It's just like you're pushing, you pushing it, the full-time people back, and you bringing the part-time people, just because you want to get this done. Wait, let me finish, and then you can say, when it comes to, to working and labor laws, and dealing with people, talking about part-time people, ain't no way where you can put a part-time people on top of full-time operator. You can't do that, 'cause you have the biggest, you bring these people, these thirteen people, I know you want them back, but if you bring these thirteen people back, and these people been laid off ever since November, and you putting them to work, and these folks out here, you got some people out here, the unemployment has ran out, they're unemployed, they were full-time people, they're using their money up, and you're looking out for the part-time? I understand Alabama is a right-to-work state, but it's some smart folks out there. If you try to do that to them, you got some on your hands.
Mr. President, hello. Put the follow-up with the Counselwoman. Uh, this is being offered to, to lay off workers and buckle away, young survey. Nobody's, the man didn't accept this. Once again, we can talk to the blue in the face, until those employees are returned to their workstation, I would hope and pray that it could happen tomorrow, but it ain't gonna happen. That's another, now, we can fight, and in between time, we can raise back and willing to accept this task of temporary nature, whether it's sacred duty in mind to help us, and the level that we face in our city. This is all that we're trying to do. We're not trying to put part-time people or full-time. The point, the point is we got a problem. The point is we got issues in our city that needs to be addressed. The point is you got sixty-eight laid off workers, I don't know how many, of that sixty-eight represent buckle boys, I really know. But of course, this is public work nature, and work is a movement, and we want to, those people who are displaced and buckle away first, with the option to allow others and other department, other layoffs to be, uh, uh, available that they so desire. If this is something they would appreciate, and if this is something they would want, once again, they may reject this, and therefore, we will go to the public, find thirteen workers to come in for a temporary basis, and do a very immediate task, Mr. President, that's all this is about, once again. Once again, we're not trying to submit, uh, the permanent employees, mayor's, that's not, that's ten of us. The ten of us is to take some newly natural found water, to put some displaced workers back to work, that will address a serious issue that we have in this city, that is garbage, that is overgrowth, that is not being done, nothing being done with it now. That's the whole, that's the whole issue, I don't, Mr. President, that's gonna get us everybody, but once again, the council, I would, uh, uh, support it, and the mayor would have to support it. Because if the mayor said, "No, we ain't making nobody back," and it ain't gonna get done. I had a lot addressed to the mayor, I've been trying to get a hold of him all day to at least inform him of the intent, and I will be married to this council. But once again, if the council rejects it, so be it, and if the mayor rejects it, so be it. This is something that I'm putting out here, a wisdom is to help thirteen.
Yeah, the only thing the council can do is provide the funds, but the mayor, I think, can hire them and bring them back.
Amen to that.
Counselwoman Jackson?
Okay, so I wanna make sure that, um, I understand exactly, um, what's being stated. It appears to me that the counsel, um, has stated that, in, instead of using the forty-five thousand dollars that was initially voted on and allocated at the last meeting for us to hire contractors in our wards to provide, um, grass cutting services, he's asking that we compile these funds and allow, um, the city to employ part-time, uh, thirteen individuals with those, the same group of funds. Now, I, I would have, um, rather that you asked this, um, not about, um, not before Mr. Peake and the insurance, but actually, um, for Mr. Jones, because what I would like to see, if we have an argument, I'm not, um, a union person, and I don't know, um, much about that. Um, I understand there are some things that we can, but I, I'm not sure that I understand that, um, we lost one point four, one point nine, depending on who's speaking, million dollars. depending on who's speaking, million dollars, that told between sixty-eight and ninety-three, ninety-four employees, depending on who's speaking, um, that we can't utilize fifty thousand dollars to solve the problem, um, in the, in the area. And I would like some legal adv- advice regarding this matter, because we, we, if we have fifty thousand dollars for the next five years, we need to equal the hundred, and, uh, almost one point four, and probably four, one point nine million dollars. And so, are we never allowed to hire anyone else because we laid off those employees? I just need to understand, because right now, I'm doing this, I'm sympathetic and understand that we don't want to hire some. But in addition, we do have a serious issue, um, it's causing rats and rodents all over the city. I think this, um, though, well devised, I think it goes into the administrative day-to-day operation song, and I don't think it would be, um, well received, um, just on previous, um, actions. However, I think this is a, a, a good plan. I think that we need to, uh, work together as, as a body, to try to get the, the entire city in a position that, um, it can be cut. Um, but I need to know from Woody, because what I, the last thing I want to do, um, excuse me, not Woody, Attorney Jones, the last thing I want to do is put the city in further liability, because, and then I'm gonna call you, uh, Mr. Pete. Um, I, 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 I said to Councilwoman Thomas, we were at the meeting, and they had these gold sponsors, bronze, platinum silver, and they were talking about their reduction in liability, and the things that they were doing to, um, to keep their costs down, um, in regards to their, um, insurance, and they were actually getting funding back off their premiums. And of course, that was not on any of those lists, um, for doing a great job. And what you stated to us previously is that Amity is the only insurer that we have, that is willing to take a chance with us. Is that correct?
I would, I would say that there's a very limited number of companies, uh, at the current level, that would, that would provide an affordable insurance program.
And so, we're, we're limited, and I don't want to open us up to liability. I hear some of, um, the interviews were saying that we're gonna open up ourselves to liability, and I don't want to do that. But at the same time, I had someone, my wife, who fell into a manhole because it was covered with grass, and they didn't see it. And so, that's gonna be a liability. Um, he called me and said he injured his knee. Um, and I said, was there a cover on it first? Because I know my area is covered without covers. And he said, yes, it was covered, but it was covered with grass, and it flipped, and he went out. And so, there's some legal issues there, and so, I mean, like my uncle used to say, you got half a foot, like, a dozen in one hand and six in the other. And so, I just need to know legally what we're supposed to do, because I, I think, you know, this is a start. It may be fifty thousand dollars, it's not sixty-eighty, it's not one point nine, but we missed way back. And I'm quite sure we'll get as close to one point nine, one point four, than we did eight months ago.
Hold on, we have councilwoman Benjamin and councilwoman, uh, Thomas.
All right, we're all happy to have this way back, obviously, I'm, I'm gonna bring you into this in just a second. Have it back. Uh, my July is grass cutting, and since somehow you were using it as an example, and you just started all this. Well, so, thank you. Um, all right, when you get the answer, uh, from, you got an answer today?
No, he's looking into it.
Okay, when you get that answer, I'm gonna move forward and more forward, because we voted on it. I'm moving on forward, cutting this grass is a danger, uh, it's a public safety issue. So, when you get that answer, uh, I'm moving forward. Um, so, Madam Chair, speak please.
Uh, councilwoman, I, I need to, refresh your memory of the conversation that you and I had earlier today in my office. I asked you, um, one question was, had you spoken with the mayor on this year? You told me no, you said you was gonna speak with him on. But I also, when you, when you presented this, where I said it's a great idea to bring back, but I also brought to your attention that there was a HR director of which you all had to fund it. There was a recreation position of which you all had also to fund it. There was a captain's salary being paid in the budget of which you all never funded. Um, but, no, let me finish, let me finish, Councilwoman Short, because I need to make, I need to make sure. The councilwoman Short, uh, councilwoman Short, uh, because I want to make sure I'm clear on what I said. What I did was, I brought that to your attention to say that, this, while this is a great idea, and, and I thought that you brought, I recommended this, because we, you all had no option in terms of moving forward. But I brought to your attention that there are some positions that are legally being paid out of the general fund, that you all did not vote for, that those, instead of paying those positions, you could bring back thirteen employees, labor, and their actual wage, which is minimum wage, as opposed to paying sixty-eight thousand dollars for a salary, sixty-five thousand dollars for a salary, and forty-seven thousand. That's what I told you. That, and we, let me finish, we first went on the conversation, I did say, I said, we could, I, my recommendation would have never been to lay off those employees, because one, I brought to your attention also previously, that it was odd to lay off those number of employees within a month and a half. One, one and a half month, we were able to have all of our bills paid in January. I have said to this council time and time again, the issue is a cash flow issue. It is not a, we don't have money issue, it's the timing in which we receive our revenue and bills get paid off, and that is normally the last four, um, four months in the year. So, my recommendation, when I stood up here, and I said, I would never recommend to lay them, I would have made the recommendation to lay them off in the first. That's why I also said that it is up to the mayor whether he brings the op, bring them back because he's over operation. But my recommendation would have never to lay them off. Therefore, I did say, yeah, they should be brought back. So, I just wanted to bring clarity to that.
No, this is another one, I told you, this is what I told you. I understand what you're saying, but that's a battle for another day. I understood, that's what you said. I'm not prepared to fight that battle, because we've got some issues moving, we didn't help somebody out. We can help somebody right now. This is a battle we don't want to fight. This is something that we as a council have to vote on. When you're talking about those unfunded positions, the match has entered against what you're saying. So, therefore, down the road, there's gonna be a clash, that's gonna be a clash, let me finish. That's gonna be a clash, that's a battle ain't nothing gonna be done. He says, she says, but this is something that we can help, um, we can help thirteen workers right, right away. I understood everything you said in this way about these unfunded positions. And, and of course, let me say this, I wonder why those unfunded positions, to the council prepared to vote on that budget tonight, when some people were talking about some thing that my son would not, it was tough. So, let's make that clear, that's why I didn't have to vote on that budget, because I was finished to what's, what, what was done, because what was said by the president, we did our homework, yeah, we did your homework outside of me. So, what you said in this way, I understood what you told, uh, this morning, Christian and Wood. But that's a battle for another day.
We did our homework.
It is something that we as a council can do.
And I still haven't.
Mr. President, I have a floor.
No, hold on.
No, no, I have a floor.
I brought Ms. Wade in for.
You jumped in on my question.
Well, Ms. Wade can floor, and then I can, I don't know what she said.
I didn't say anything, because she called your name, but it was me with the call.
Well, she called my name.
That's why I said that.
Let's go back to what she said.
Okay, so going back to Ms. Wade, I brought you, I was talking to you. So, as I asked you just now to speak, and, and you did speak, um, to the mayor. The mayor can dis- the budget as long as he pleases, right? But the budget is the budget, it is the guiding bible of finance. And that is the duty of this panel. He can treat it as long as he pleases. So, I talked to Ms. Wade, because I was concerned, I was still concerned about grass cutting. Let's get back to grass cutting. She told me the same thing that she said right now, I didn't know you all had spoke about that. But she, I said, Ms. Wade, this defunded position, you know, we can be used to this money for something, tell me about that. She told me about the defunded position. She doesn't even know where to pay these people that are running around saying they're employees, because their position is defunded. And so, she doesn't know where to pay these people. In other words, we have, how many, how much money, how, for each position we have available, each defunded position, we have available, how much money? You can say one by one.
Six, sixty-eight thousand for the recreation director. Sixty, sixty-five thousand for the captain's position. Forty-seven thousand for the human resource director.
Uh-huh. All of which were defunded.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. I think my homework, I thought we did our homework collectively, we wanted to defund the position.
We did, because everybody was here. Everybody was at the meeting. Everybody was in the budget, everybody was present.
There was, Mr. President, because I'm being accused of not knowing what you guys knew. There was a consensus by this council that the police budget we never funded, and we moved on. Did we not, uh, councilwoman?
As far as I recall.
We did not even talk about the police budget, about defunding some capital positions.
It was never, it was never, it was never, councilwoman.
I can't believe it. I can't believe it.
I got documented, I came in September twenty fourteen.
Uh, councilwoman.
So, I'm not finished, I'm not finished, and the more y'all cut me off, the more I'm gonna talk. So, I'm gonna let me finish.
Councilwoman Benjamin.
So, this captain's position, everybody's up in more, with, the position was created. So, can you tell me the date that it was funded, Madam Chair?
It was never, it's been, well, when I got back, it was already being, the person was already being paid the position.
Uh-huh.
But it was, I came in September twenty fourteen, we only had one captain's lot, and that was our.
We gave it to Capes.
Right.
So, the position was created, but it was never funded. So, there was nothing to take out, because there was nothing in there.
Correct.
Mr. President, are you, are you, are you, councilwoman?
Yes, well, that.
Not from the, the Congress, councilwoman Booby, then councilwoman Jackson, then councilwoman.
Okay, I, I just want to say this, and I'm saying this to all of my brothers and sisters sitting up here. Certain things you can want to do, but there's certain things that you have to be careful. Because I ain't finna stick my nose, and I ain't finna vote for no, over a part-time person than a full-time somebody been here twenty, thirty years. Because I know for a fact that it would, I'm seeing things that need to be done. There's so much need to be done in this city, that supposedly done on a day-to-day base, operation run every day. Since November, since November, you add these months up, there has not been any day-to-day operation on this ground, in this street, round here. We even paying, I feel so bad, because we pay for a pot truck, right now. That we have to worry about getting these potholes fixed. We making a note on a pot truck, that we ain't got, nobody can come out there and fill these holes. And some of these holes, there's people, I feel like the people feel, tan your car, and you get refused by the insurance. You gotta claim it on your insurance, when you file through, uh, for the city, they tell you, it's, it, nothing to do about it. So, you gotta put it on your insurance. So, my thing is this here, I believe in doing right, and I believe it stands for right. But I don't believe in throwing the hard-working person back behind the bus, and let somebody partner come in, even though you sick, that's, that's money there. But my heart ain't, ain't, ain't for that, I believe in doing things right.
So, the caller. Okay, go ahead. Then, listen. Just out of curiosity, since we went on this whole thing about, that, I, I mean, I'm brain dead now at this point. So, was the idea that the thirteen people that we can bring back, again hypothetically, bring back, was that based on the money that being used? If the, the conversation strictly was about money from defunded positions being reallocated to hire thirteen people, part-time? Or was it money, was it an idea that, that that money was on top of, or in addition to, available monies to hire people back to cut grass?
She's taking a line, and then pocket with your sister, and I don't know, I don't know what the, what the line was.
The conversation, once he asked me about taking the money from this position, I, I suggested an option where you could get more than three people back, you can actually get thirteen back, if you enforce the budget that was set forth.
I got you.
That's, that's.
So, the original conversation was circled around three people coming back to cut grass in public works?
Right.
Part-time?
Part, well, three to twelve to, how many?
Why about you, twelve?
Independent of the defunded.
Part-time, twelve, part-time.
Independent, independent of the def- the funded positions, Mark?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Hold on, councilwoman, councilwoman Jackson?
I'll be sure, I'll be right back. Okay, so, Madam Chair.
Yes.
You're over there, over there, this is giving you the, um, budget that has been approved. Follow, if it's not funded, don't pay it.
That's right.
Um, you got an ethical duty, and you got a responsibility. And absolutely, if it's not in the budget, do not pay it. Now, I don't know why you need to ask us again about that, um, because I think it's clear that what we understood when we voted. Um, and whether we voted individually or not, there is some things that I voted on individually, the capital's position. I stayed abstained from it. Um, but the fact that, Madam, we operate as a council together, so my individual vote does not count. The majority rules. And so, you have the authority of this council that if someone is in the defunded position, that we do not need to pay it. And then, if there are any legal obligations, therefore, we have an attorney, and we have an attorney that we've hired, and they can do that, because why you don't? I sent it to our president, and I sent it to our attorney, and I voted several times for it not to be paid. And it is my understanding that anyone that pays, I call them, um, that takes it, they held responsibility.
Personally.
Personally, personally, that's right. Um, for ensuring, for directing, demanding, authorizing, providing, whatever the label term they would like to use, that payment. And so, um, if they're willing to put themselves in that position, then that's where we are. But it is our responsibility, and yours for us, to ensure the physical soundness of, of this, um, city, as well as, um, to ensure that we're as close to the budget as possible. And if there's not been a minute, has there been a minute?
None.
Not to my, my, mine, and so, since there hasn't been a minute, follow through.
And the, one thing I do, in terms of a legal standpoint, my concern was the liability of the city, because if these employees have performed their duties, then, and they don't get paid for that salary, I need to make sure that, hey, the council understands what the ramification is for, on behalf of the city.
Okay, so, Mr. President, then there, there you are, as I'm, there needs to be another seat to say cease and desist, um, get our attorney to do it immediately. This was not, um, entered into the budget, it should not be, and so, you should not be performing any duties. And if you choose to volunteer and do that, that would be on your, on your end. However, we wouldn't want that you do any of it, that is not our desire. Our desire is that we have those funds, and then after those positions are not being paid, I need you to send out another letter and ask for the funds that have been paid for the last six, seven, eight.
You ever seen the email yet, finally, by the signal?
No.
You've talked to Attorney Siegel? Let's, I mean, that's, that's a known, boy.
Councilman, the show is not doing, you're a councilman, sure. We did agree with that we're funded, not to touch the public sector.
I'm not aware, I'm not aware of two of those definations, uh, but, uh, I do think there is a ELC claim about the third. But let me remind my colleagues, that this council vote on a recommendation that was set forth by Councilman Johnson, that was recommending Chief Cargill, of the motion of Lieutenant Natasha Fawcett to the position of captain. Prior to that vote, which took place in November, there was a communication sent to Mr. Jared Cunningham, Mr. President. And let me read this, uh, it was dated October the twenty seventh. I think all these communications were dated October twenty seventh. This is to Mr. Jared Cunningham from the chief, Spencer Cargill, reference creating captain position, dated October twenty seventh, twenty seventh, two. Mr. Cunningham, as you may know, the city, the seven city council recently approved the creation of an administrative captain position, which we did, beat the minutes. And the previous year's budget, a lieutenant served as the administrative officer, and that position was filled by Sam Miller, who has such design. Additionally, a vacant lieutenant slot in the previous year's budget was not filled. It is my intention to promote Lieutenant Natasha Fawcett to the new established captain position. The unfilled lieutenant slots in due previous year's budget, and the subsequent continuing resolution should cover the increased cost of the captain position, and would not negatively affect the existing tenant. That's why we chose that, bothered that budget. I am requesting a letter from you to City Council President Bowie, that the promotion has a zero net impact on the budget, and see ours sincerely. I am requesting a letter from you to City Council President Bowie, that the promotion has a zero net impact on the budget, and see ours sincerely, J S Carrion. Now, there's a follow-up memo to you, Mr. President.
Mm-hmm.
Dated October the twenty seventh, uh, from Mr. Jared Cunningham Finance Department. We all know he's the person the mayor brought in in the absence of Ms. Wade. Uh, copy, copy to Mayor Dario Melton, Chief Spencer Carrion, dated October twenty seventh, twenty seventeen, reference newly created police captain position. Natasha Fox was a police lieutenant. As a result of her promotion to the police captain and the creation of the new police captain position as approved by the city council, which we did, the finance department would use her previous police lieutenant vacancies, as well as another police lieutenant vacancy, to pay for the budget salary increase for the newly created police captain position. Based on last year's budget F Y seventeen, create a new captain position and abolish the two lieutenant positions with not increased the budget salary allowance for the police department. Please let me know if you have a dis- question or concern. Okay, first of all, I didn't respond to it because, let me tell you why. On the council, can't create a position, we have to vote on it. If we never, we never vote on it. Number two, if you look at the policy of the city management, a chairperson did not bring forth a recognition. It passed a conference by supervisor, which was Chief Carrion. Councilman Johnson did not bring forth that recognition. Is this the E O C lawsuit? I think it is, that's all, it's, that, that was on the school's, uh, uh, court side, right? I was wrong, that would be my recommendation.
Okay, we have.
Councilwoman? Mr. President, assuming that the date and the timeline on this letter that was read to us is correct, then, first of all, this assumption means that should have gone to H R, and not the finance department. I'm not, I'm, why did this go to Jared? That, that's a human resource that, isn't there a form, I don't know the name of the form?
Personnel action.
Personnel action form that's supposed to be filled out, it goes to personnel, not to finance, out of order. Out of order is what is detailed on that letter. That should go down to H R. So, taking it to the finance person, it's nothing. That's, that's, that's void.
See it now, sorry. Okay, all right. Councilwoman Jackson, then Councilor Randolph, we will move on.
I guess my concern is, um, are we required to do budget amendments? And so, I heard you read, um, that the position was created, recently approved the creation of administrative captain position. Of course, you all know I wasn't at the meeting, I was at a juror conference, um, but it was created, um, and I, I don't see in any of the statements. I see where he's stating he's going to move money in the budget, but I don't see where there was a budget amendment that came back before the council, that was approved by the council, to amend the budget, to ensure that the position that was created was now funded.
Mr. President, this is E O C claim, and I think it would be wise to cease and desist on this, and on this, on this issue, and let the courts tell who was right and who was wrong. That would be my recommendation.
Councilwoman Randolph?
Yeah, that's about the smartest thing my colleague said over there.
No.
Cause you, you just.
Say something, detective, I didn't hear this issue, Council, my colleague brought this issue, I didn't write it up.
I'm just saying, you said cease and desist, whatever you said, but, uh, because, I, truly, when some of the colleagues up here bring us up, it's a setup. They trying to get y'all to talk, ladies and gentlemen, y'all better be quiet, it's a setup. You gonna be testifying in court? I'm telling you, that's all it is. I'm telling you, it's a setup. That's all it is. Yeah, I just said, let, let the court take whatever, whatever, you know. But I tell you then, there's some men's lieutenants out there, they need to file an E O C complaint. I can say that, right? I can tell you, they're losing money.
Okay, I, let the court prepare. Councilwoman.
Um, Mr. President, um, you may not have, you may not have, um, since we're talking about actual lawsuits and complaints and all that, that, that's a segue into my other item that I text you, pardon me, getting it.
Laws.
After you had printed it, and that agenda item was lawsuits. And so, over the weekend, council members, I learned that we have another lawsuit, um, on the way. This one is federal and has been given a federal case number, and, uh, they're going to court. It, yes, and so, yet another law, is, can somebody add these up for me, is, is the question? Because all of this money, right, this one, yes, a federal case number, so, right to sue, they have a right to sue. The allegations are deep, and they run deep, and here we go again.
Which one?
And we, we, we just add on the newspaper, cause I'm gonna say, city council, city council ready for a law case. We're not, yeah, it's not against us. It's against the recreation department and mainly, and it is very detailed on what the right to sue is for this federal case that's been given, a federal case number. Here we go again, back down the same line. Are we adding this up?
And one thing keep in mind, the only thing the municipality can cover is a hundred thousand dollars, and that's the last.
That's why I found that.
And when you look at federal, uh, going to the federal, what I'm gonna do tomorrow, I'm gonna get with Jones and Rick Howard, to see can we.
Please.
Can we squash this, I mean, work something out?
Oh, wow.
Especially when you're talking about on the federal.
This one's going to court.
Yeah, they, they, they're gonna back out.
This, this one's just going to court.
I know they're not gonna back out.
Got Jim Crosshairs, you're sitting there, you're a big old block, and I'm gonna be pulling trigger on him.
We wanted to stop, we had an opportunity to, we mean it, hey, not us, but y'all know what I mean, what I said.
Yeah, he's one of the shot.
There, there was an opportunity, Mr. President.
They've been patient a long time.
To do what you, to do what you're suggesting, Mr. President, the opportunity was not taken downstairs. And now, here we are with a federal case.
I might have a snowball chance together, can I be proud of you?
At least you got a snowball chance now, unless, there's a slim chance there.
Real trouble, Council.
There's a Melmore, he's the dope.
You're giving them an added up, yeah. We ain't got no hundred thousand dollars.
I heard, I just heard a rumor, I'm not gonna say that thing, so, Councilwoman Jackson?
Um, do you mind if I segue with the right to sue into my agenda item?
Well, that sounds, that's, that's perfectly.
Hey, hey, let's, yes, utilize it. I don't wanna, I don't wanna skip Councilwoman Youngler, or Councilwoman, um, Randolph, since we're talking about suit. Um, I will let you know, I will not sue. I'm gonna say this before I get started, I will not sue, period.
Okay.
I've chosen not to sue.
Oh, so am I.
Take that for the team.
So am I.
Take that one for the team.
Thank all of you.
Why I ain't decided not to sue?
Okay. Can we work together not to sue?
I'm gonna give them a right to sue.
It will be done, all right?
Yeah. Um, so, traffic striping and, um, signal violations, and that's something about just traffic striping. So, I get a call from the Alabama Department of Public Safety, that says that the area in and around downtown, um, is without the proper lines. Um, so, if you go down Lot B, over from the courthouse, you don't know which, people just drive in the middle of the street because they don't realize that it's actually four lanes to one way and to the other. Um, right, and, um, so, they made me aware that this was liability, um, that they, they citizens to call and complain, um, and make them aware. Um, and so, this is in, in my ward, but it's all about down, downtown, um, and I went through the area, and sure enough, there's nothing down. And so, I spoke with Ozark Striper, um, I spoke with Public Works, and asked could they do it. I sent an email back in March, I have never received a response. I included our, um, president on it, I have never received a response from anyone. Um, and, um, so, I contacted Public Works, went out there, spoke with Mr. Hendrick, asked, and who do you all utilize? They said they weren't capable of doing that type of work. Um, he made me aware that they've, um, worked with Ozark Striper before, called them out, they came out one day last week, um, and we rolled around the areas together, and he gave me an estimate. I sent it to, um, our treasurer and said, how do I get this funded, because I do not have enough funds. It's about nine thousand dollars, is that correct? She, she may be aware.
Red light camera?
Excuse me?
Red light camera, this is mine.
She, she, she gave me some line items, I didn't do it, I'm sick of it. She gave me some line items that we can utilize, and, um, Mr. President, I'm asking that you all please consider this immediately, because if someone has a head on, please email it to me. And I emailed you the line item, um, that we can utilize some funds from there. If you all approve it, then I can go through the purchase order process, and we can actually get this started as soon as possible. But that, um, with the Alabama Department of Public Safety, I don't know how they got none of that.
Thank you for being the representative.
Yeah, for what, thank you, and so, um. I, I, I'll email it to you, to you all, I, I forward it, I don't have my email pulled up, uh, right at the moment, because my battery's running low, and I didn't bring my charger, so I can't use my hot, hot spot. Um, so, I'll, I'll make sure I send it. I'm not gonna promise before tonight is over, because this is, it's part safety. Okay, so, the other item, uh, we, we all clear that we can use some funds out of Public Works, which is, the, um, treasurer's found to utilize that nine thousand dollars, keep in mind that, thank you, guys. I really appreciate you. The other one is signal violations. So, if you recall several meetings ago, I alluded to when Councilwoman Thomas, um, brought up some information about the traffic lights, that we had actually been contacted, um, by a representative from.
That's what you mean, buddy.
So, um, that we've been contacted, our city of Selma had been contacted by, um, Ms. Williams, who informed us that gas and had some lights, they were, they were no longer utilizing, and would like to give to the city of Selma, where our mayor, um, turned those lights down. And I won't, um, you know, my, I was telling someone today, my, my leader, um, mentor, um, Judge Armstrong, said always allow men to save face, and so, in the, in the honor of doing that, I won't send you his email, but I'm telling you, I was embarrassed, and I'm, and I replied, um, in kind. And I really apologize on behalf of the city of Selma for him being treated that way. He has not.
Mr. Judge, you said a judge?
No, it's, 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 yeah.
Yeah, this is.
Oh, yeah, Bob, okay, yeah, I got you.
And so, he has been working with the city of Selma based on his letter since, um, Mayor Smith, um, and he's worked with each mayor since then, uh, including Mayor Perkins and Evans, and tried to work with Mayor Melton, without any success. What he informed me, um, was that if the administration or anyone had taken any time to listen to him, um, and they would have known that we're in violation of federal and state law regarding our traffic signals. Um, there is a requirement federally and, um, by state law, that, um, Department of Transportation, that we're to have double lights at every intersection. We only have singular lights. Um, so, if you get off of the major ways that D O T carries, that's Broad Street, you see, we, on Broad Street, we have those nice big double lights, but if you go to our G S S, that you have a single light, and then you may have another, um, big light, but we generally have, um, in our neighborhood, singular lights on First Avenue, and things of that sort. Where there was a case in nineteen ninety-two in Anderson, this law goes back as far as nineteen seventy, seventy-one, uh, and so, but there was a case in nineteen ninety-two in An- Anderson, when, um, a motorist was killed at an intersection that was controlled by a sing- single signal. And the family's attorney argued in court that the intersection was deficient and in violation of the code. The result was that families, um, the city acted, they handed a quarter million dollar judgment, um, for the loss of their loved ones. Reason I say I won't sue is because I had an accident, August eighth of last year, in an intersection with a singular light. Um, the gentleman who was from Georgia, not from, um, Selma, was actually looking at the Broad Street and G L Chestnut light, and he told the officer, I had a green light, because I even had the terminal signal. And I'm like, officer Key, there's not a terminal signal on this light, he's looking down there. And so, seeing his dog, I was scratching to, my baby had to give up his season, football season that year, we had to go back and forth. I will not sue the city of Selma for being in violation of the code, but now that we know that, I'm asking that we urgently, um, vote that we will accept those lights, and let me, hey, 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 hey. And let me, please allow me to, um, interact with the city of Gas, and to accept those lights, and if we are allowed to accept them, to put them up as soon as possible, because we are in violation. I spoke with, um, traffic engineer from the Alabama Department of, um, Transportation, and that's who I actually stepped out of the office, um, here just a moment ago, to answer this call again, Mr. Ramsey Ashmore, A S H M O R E. And he stated to me that we are in fact, and this is not a recommendation, this is a requirement, the city shall have double lights. Takes you there. And so, um, we're, we're going to have to locate some money, um, get those lights here, and we got to move it as soon as possible. Right, we, we're gonna have to get some money to get them shipped here, there's about twenty-five, if they even want to deal with us. Um, I reached out to Gas, um, with, uh, Mr. Bear, we, um, prior to coming to this meeting, they have not applied to me. Um, and so, we may have burned it, if, even if we have, we got to find some. It is now our responsibility, and we are putting, um, others in liability, just because I've chosen not to sue, doesn't mean others won't.
Councilwoman Thomas, then Councilwoman.
Oh, uh, President Boe. Give, give it to him, I'll come back, go.
Uh, I was asking, I was asking, you had, you had asked a question to the trader about spending some money, what money were you talking about?
Spending money from, are you talking about the lines?
No, no, we had said something, uh, you had been missing on, we okay to spend money?
So, I, I asked her, um, if there was any funding that we could, um, find for the strikers, and in the downtown area, that I got a call from the Department of Public Safety that we were, um, lacking. And she gave me agenda items that I said, excuse me, a line item, in which she said there was funding. Do you have that put up on your email?
I do, from the gas tank.
Yeah, and then she said that we can utilize, I don't wanna put it up, because I don't have any.
It's a gas tank.
Yeah, I had talked, I had also been in a conversation with Councilwoman Davis, as well as Councilwoman Thomas, and I had a recommendation that I was gonna present for the council on tomorrow, to take, um, we have a budget for state gas tax to do traffic light and street repairs. However, we spin into that budget, it's normally eighty-four thousand, we have about fifty-three thousand available, and I'm not sure what, um, Public Works have, but I was gonna make a recommendation. We have probably about, in excess of that cash on hand, for state gas tax, probably about a hundred and fifty thousand, um, was once, um, outside of the budget amount, so I was gonna make a recommendation for a hundred and ten thousand dollars. A hundred thousand go towards caving and around the city, and ten thousand to cover the traffic light issue. I mean, that, and, and.
Drive.
Yes, that's why I had those agenda items.
I'm, 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 I'm still, I thought you had asked her about the money that's been appropriated for the gas, did you not ask her that? So, Parker, Councilwoman, um, would that be something we can put on consent?
Yes, that was something I would like, I get you. That was something I would like to say, and if we could just put on consent, that, um, we would, we would accept the gift of gas, from Gas, and I'm gonna make all the apologies, and then I can come back and see, and I'll talk with, uh, the treasurer, before we get here, and see what we can do, if I can like.
Councilwoman, I think, takes that control, that I'm trying to get it to, I'm not getting it.
That was back there, when Davis was still here, wasn't it? It's been a while since I had a conversation with Gas and Selma took place, correct?
Yes, um, this, this email is dated March third, first, twenty seventeen.
Yeah.
No response.
I'm reading that off. Is it Councilwoman Thomas, or is it Councilwoman?
Oh, uh, President Boe, you know, let me give two of my items, and I had two more, too. Okay, this is. Councilwoman Thomas, before you get, this is about the same thing, it's, it's gonna be real quick. Yes. My items, number, y'all see number twelve, thirteen, and fourteen? This is the same thing I discussed with her, that Councilwoman Jackson had seen, had, had talked about. This is the same one hundred and, um, ten thousand that she's gonna recommend, that take care, takes care of twelve, thirteen, and fourteen, because this is the exact same thing I was talking about. Potholes, caves, and cavings, and lubrication.
Oh, right.
Um, same, it's the same thing, so that's twelve, thirteen, and fourteen on, on the business items. Thank you, Councilwoman Thomas.
Councilwoman.
Okay, well, my item, um, I wanted to bring up, you know, I did my research on about, uh, the, the electric box for the lights, the lights are out in our cities, it, where, where we got, uh, we need, that is, that is a major problem that we have to get fixed. Well, I did find, me and Ms. Wade, we did a lot of research, we did find, uh, the light switch boxes. We found what they have, minutes we need, and I just throwed out a number, which is close to about that minute we need, I'd say ten. Uh, I know for a fact there's. I know for a fact there's about four out in my area. And then you got here going down, where is that, Dallas Avenue? Back down, back this way. We got about a possibility, maybe, maybe about ten. The, uh, they're asking for five thousand seven hundred dollars for their box, which the, uh, the one that Stevenson had was seven thousand and what, eight hundred and thirteen dollars? Was it seven thousand eight hundred and thirteen?
Yeah.
Yeah. So we found, uh, this is with the, the state, this is with the state, uh, we found the boxes, the light switch boxes. And they, um, I talked to Ms., Mrs. Wade about, um, could we, uh, pay for these boxes out of gas tax? Because, uh, these, these lights, these, uh, street lights can't continue being out. We, this is something that the city needs to fix. We need to get these boxes so these lights can get back to running in, uh, in, uh, in our wards.
So, Ms. Wade, would that be a portion of the, that takes you necessarily?
I think we should go probably about another fifteen thousand just to be safe.
That, that, that would encompass...
Yeah, that you, you lack some of the budget that we already have out of the business. Because I don't know the pop hole cavity or what those costs would be, but we could, we could, we can go up to about the one twenty-five.
One twenty-five, what was it? It was one ten or one twenty-five.
Still one ten.
And Stevenson said there is seven that he need, but I think, I, I throwed out ten because I, I've been riding around. And I know for a fact that we, we need these lights.
So, other words, we are including light switch boxes and...
The light switch. Pop hole, and everything street related. There's a couple of that.
And also authorize Councilwoman Jackson move forward with this.
Yes, yes.
The gift.
The gift. All right, anything else?
Yeah, before you leave, go and ask him now. So, I have, y'all will be, you know, so they won't be saying, "I ain't know what you said there."
I don't remember saying that.
Okay, all of us know that, that we have, we had this problem before. Now, I'm one of these people, when you go to bashing, uh, blaming the council people for things, I, 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 I don't believe in that. And I, I don't care if you bash me on Facebook, but you should need to come to a council meeting to hear what we talk about. Uh, we, we came into this problem before about an ordinance, remember? When I had the problem in my ward about the gentleman trying to bring the, the little house, remember the house on the trail? And he wanted to place it on the property. And it was an open lot and I say, you know, the city said, "If you can't bring that in, let somebody live in." So you know we violated our ordinance about that. And, uh, well, it was, it was something said about this council that I know wasn't true, that we did not vote for, um, what had happened, even though it moved fast in two weeks and, uh, it's like this. And, uh, I think when you disrespect this, this body...
Yeah.
We know what it is. Go ahead. Go ahead. Okay, when you dis...
Turn it off.
When you disrespect the council and this body, I speak out because I feel that, uh, you know, I understand, you know, you might work for, uh, you might work for the city of Selma, but we all have, uh, we have to follow. We have to follow the rules. And our ordinance and everything apply to all of us. So we had problems, we were getting chewed out about the car lot being put, the house being put, brought into the city. We get blamed that we know for a fact that, that nobody up here voted. It never came before the council. We know, everybody know that. It never came before this panel.
No, ma'am.
Uh, and they were saying that things had moved real fast, uh, in less than two weeks. Uh, we began to have a car lot, which, uh, you know, little tiny little story tellers were brought in. You know, it said that, uh, that it was supposed to, you know, you are supposed to get approved by the city council.
Yeah.
Because it was an open, it was an open lot, the same thing. And I, you know, I, I believe in doing, but I don't want people, uh, say, "Well, you, you bent them down and you didn't." So it happened. It happened again. But it turned into a business, even though it's in a business residential.
Where is it located?
Is located on Eighth.
On Eighth.
Well, Ms. Youngblood, can you please speak, that's in your ward. I disrespect you.
Now, I, I, I know. It is on the corner of West Road and Highland Avenue. Before you get to the Els, the Els Club and go to... It's where CM's firm used to be. Yes, it is, uh...
What is it?
It is a used car lot.
What's the structure we're talking about?
It's a portable building.
It's a portable building.
And, and the reason why, you know, when you stop one person from doing something, and we, see, we got to stay within our Selma city code lawyer. And we just reviolated, we just did this here, uh, in twenty sixteen.
In twenty sixteen.
Yeah, we just did this in twenty sixteen. And I just want people to know, you know, you just can't keep doing what you want to do because that we have that in place. If, if, uh, what's the new car lot just came here before us, even though they didn't have to?
Long Lewis.
Long Lewis came before us. And honor, respect, and, uh, people were saying, "Oh, Councilwoman Thomas, uh, she stopped so-and-so from putting them and, uh, they approved the count..." No, we didn't. We didn't approve anything. We didn't know that, uh, this was affected. I, uh, I'm over billing, uh, I'm not, I don't, I'm not over that part. Well, that's in Susan Youngblood, Councilwoman Susan Youngblood's board. But we do have an ordinance. And I respect Susan Youngblood because when they start beating me down and beating the council down, I called, um, Councilwoman Youngblood and I asked her, "Was she aware what was going in, what's getting put up?" And she told me, she said, "Yes." She know what, what was told her. So now that, now we're being looked at and being talked about that, uh, in two weeks, someone came, or someone works for the city, opened up a car lot, brought a little tiny house in, placed it, uh, brought the little crush and run, you know, it said you can't place that field in there unless it's already paved. That's what the ordinance said. But it was a field full of grass, which the property is owned by Mr. Daryl Stewart. And, uh, I think, uh, they leased it from him and, uh, the, the, the property is up for sale. The property still got signed up for sale. And, uh, uh, now we have a car lot for the, for, in less than two weeks. It was open and, and opened up that Saturday, had a grand open. I don't know, uh, if in us a ten. Mr. Shaw, did you go to it?
What you should ask me, I didn't know that.
Oh, what?
Count, count.
No, I don't mean in the home.
Yeah, you do.
No, I don't.
Yeah, you do.
I don't. I'm saying, well, uh, we have a car lot that has opened up in less than two weeks. It was opened up in less than two weeks. And, uh, everything was brought in, it grabbed, everything was brought in. So I, I, I just wanted to say that we just did this, uh, I mean, uh, just did this in twenty sixteen, this ordinance. So the thing is that people in the city of Selma can stop blaming the council because we didn't, we didn't have no idea that all this was done. Somebody had to sign off for the, the lights. And I think they said, uh, I think it's the Fachi signed for the, uh, you know, all this other stuff. So people should know the truth. So I just wanted to let them know, you know, they watch Facebook and they scandalize us, but that, we didn't have anything to do with it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Thomas. Councilwoman Youngblood, did you know...
And like, it's just...
Yes, please, thank you for the opportunity to explain like this, uh, Thomas, for calling me that I was in need this, um, that way. And I, I had heard just through the grapevine that there was a car lot going up and I called and asked if there was a Mr. Van Davel who also works for the city. I guess he does. I think that that's up in the air whether or not he works for the city, but, um, asked him if I told him that I understood that he was going to be a businessman in war two. And he said, "Yes." Congratulations him and asked him what he's going to be doing. And I asked him what kind of office he was going to have and he said he was going to build an office. And I said, "Well, that is great. Keep me posted and let me know when you're ready to open and we will have a party." And he said, "That sounds great." Well, he had a ribbon cutting, I understand, a couple of weeks ago, but I, I didn't know that until, until, yes, Thomas told me. When she told me that, so, um, anyway, I had no idea that it was up and going and that there was a portable building because I thought that we just going to be planning and building. So, um, but anyway, I have, have not had the opportunity to speak with him since I got back. Uh, so I don't know what his plans are. I have spoken with President Bowie and I have spoken with Mr. Jones, the attorney, Woody Jones.
Woody Jones, okay, so you have spoken with the attorney and when you, when you, uh, you heard about that you were told that a building was going to be built and an office was going to be built there and not brought in, was your understanding?
Wrong.
Okay, well, thank you, there, Councilwoman. Jackson, then, Councilwoman.
Uh, Councilwoman, um, I guess it's a simple solution and you may have already done this, to ask the, um, attorney or, uh, the inspector's office to send something to...
Ask him to please, pipe it down.
To get on my, um, stating that they have not, um, followed the ordinance and, um, that they're in violation.
I, I, I've spoken with the attorney and I've spoken with the president and, um, the president had spoken with him. And I felt like it, I feel like it is handled, um, as far as what will be done. You know, I feel like that that's going to be done, that he's going to be contacted and made aware of the ordinance and that it will be, be, um, told that the council is the correct body politic to come forward in order to get any kind of waiver, because that's what the ordinance says. The council, council is the body politic, no one else, not the mayor, not the governor, inspector, not the police, not anybody else. But the council is the only body that can, can, um, exempt him from, or anyone from the specifications. So, um, I, and, and again, as I said, I haven't spoken with him since I got back Friday. So, um, but I just spoke with the president and I spoke with the attorney. And I just feel like it's handled as far as any further, but it's, uh...
Thank you, Councilwoman Youngblood. Councilwoman Jackson, are you, you have another question?
No, I was just going to say, I mean, I, I think it's, it's, it's pretty self-explanatory.
I wanted to make sure she's finished. That's what I just asked her, "Will she finish?"
Uh, I, I was just thinking, it's pretty self-explanatory. We give a reasonable time to come in here and correct the situation. If not, there's some, um, alternatives.
That's, that's why I'm turning it over to the attorney. I mean, I think, I, I think it's...
It's, uh, it's Councilwoman, Councilwoman Shaw's turn to speak.
I was going to ask you, why would you ask who, uh, not I, to, uh, tell you that?
Well, Louie, why ask you?
I mean, of course you ask. If anybody, tell you that, then ask me.
Why would you ask me? I asked you that because you always know, you always be with, uh, Ms. Van Davel and I just wanted to get you a ten. That's all.
I mean...
You know what I'm saying? If you...
What do you mean by, I don't...
What I'm saying?
What are you talking about?
Ain't nothing what I'm talking about, just like an everyday person, like, if I be with my, if I be with Angela, be around, and you open up a business. That's why I said, "Did you attend the ribbon cutting? It was a ribbon cutter."
The one would you ask?
Because I just asked you, what's wrong with that?
Ask the whole council.
Well, I didn't ask the whole council. I asked you. Okay.
Who, who are we at on the jury now?
We're almost done. We're almost done, uh, that's it. Okay, go back up to yours, Councilwoman Reddow. We're going to go back up to Councilwoman Reddow. Uh, this hardy conversation that's almost covered. Oh, man, so let's go back to Councilwoman Reddow, number two. Item number two.
Yeah, uh, Ms. President, I, I put this on there again because I was concerned about, um, employees that were laid off in the inch, uh, unemployment or ran out. Did y'all know that? So, uh, since, uh, the majority of the employees that were laid off had vacation time, I would like to, you know, somehow give, with Miss Wade, some people, make a little decision, you know, uh, seeing the ways how we can give some of their vacation time. Because as you stand now, our, our handbook states that if a person no longer with the city, they are tied to eighty hours of vacation time. But since it was a frivolous, uh, layoff from the get-go by the mayor, I would like to see all the employees get, uh, uh, the total amount of vacation time that they have, not at one time. But we talking about like, and forty-hour increments, like a pay period till they run out of their vacation time, you know? But if it's all said and done, you know, the employees get, uh, you know, that time due to the minimum. So if we say we ain't going to give them their vacation time, you know, that, you got to give to them because they going to sue. And once they get sued, there going to be another lawsuit because if I was sitting there and I don't ran out of unemployment and I know I got three hundred and forty hours sitting at the city, you know, or something, something wrong with that. But like I said, I was going to give them a way, um, and try to work out, uh, see how, how other cities would, uh, would do with, uh, having this situation. Because it's very important for us to, uh, look out for our employees that are laid off. So, um, go ahead. Okay.
I'm, I'm, I'm concerned, I'm concerned. You said, I have some people sitting on the hotline, they would contact me and say, you know, "I left because the conditions were so bad that I could not handle this and I wouldn't have, uh, but I couldn't stay with this, um, administration." And they feel like, um, them being made to leave because of their work environment was frivolous. And so if we don't determine frivolous, I'm telling you, we have five or six more that are saying that I want all my, my vacation time. And they may have been here, you know, seventeen years, for example, for one of them. So I, I understand, I'm just saying, if, I don't want to open Pandora's box.
I'm not opening Pandora's box. I'm talking about the people that's laid off.
Yes.
If they ever, if they ever laid off, then they left on their own. You know, they should have their vacation time, they left on their own.
But they would, they would have, based on the, um, our policy, they wouldn't have gotten over eighty hours.
No, no, they would have got there with, your boss said eighty hours.
Right. I said they wouldn't have gotten over the eighty hours. And so, um, you, you said that, you said in the example, this employee has three hundred and forty hours and they won't make it to three hundred and forty hours, where they had so many, but because it was destined to their health, their well-being, their mental status, their, their physical status, and they have...
They weren't laid off, so...
Right, right, right. What kind of motherfucker looking at you and be deciding to support that?
Because like I said, if they were laid off, was laid off, I, I, you know, that's a good message. I, I said laid off employee. And we not trying to give them all the vacation time at one time. You know, that, that, I know that I heard the same, but we saying, you know, hey, they got some time, you know, um, uh, forty hours or, or pay period, they get paid, but every two weeks or something like that.
You, you spoke to Ms. Wade, I heard?
Yeah, I, I spoke to her, but I told her, find some...
Yeah, I found, I was told.
Yeah, find some lawyers and stuff like that so we could, um, you know, see how, how we can do this because, um...
I, I was, I was trying to list, um, HR, trying to have how much vacation everybody paying. And how much, I, I was trying to get with, um, HR this, uh, kind of week to see how much vacation was remaining for those that were laid off, who was in, you know, who was tied to two weeks or whatever their max amount to see what that cost would look like.
I just wanted to remind you, don't forget, we do have an employee that is, is threatened suit because he was not allowed to have his eighty hours. Um, and so maybe the amount of our treasuries that, um, that we changed, but, um, yeah, I think everybody knows what I'm speaking about. He was laid off. He, he resigned and, uh, but he had eighty hours and...
He should have, he should have been able to.
The handbook policy says it's at the discretion of the supervisor...
The handbook policy says it's at the discretion of the supervisor depending on how you leave. If you leave, if, if there's a lack, if you didn't get enough notice of just the mayor action of, then the supervisor determines whether or not you're entitled to two weeks leave. It doesn't automatically grant two weeks leave.
Also, uh, President Bowie, uh, we have someone that, uh, we attend a, this could be an event that asked me to sign to do for the employees that, uh, that are laid off, that, uh, unemployment has ran out, that they are gonna give five thousand dollars to the, uh, to the employees. And, uh, I'm gonna have them to do a letterhead, uh, letter sent to, so we can get that information. I went to HR department, I talked to the personnel tech, but I didn't talk, you know, I'm not, I, I talked to the personnel tech. And she said that, uh, uh, I'm gonna get in touch with him tonight and they can do a letterhead up and then we can have to see who, uh, the employees that are laid off. Cause you know, you can't give the money to, uh, people that are employed. You can't give that money to them. You can give it to the ones that are, that are unemployed, that unemployment has run out.
And they're, they're gonna do that privately now?
Yeah, that's why he said get the list.
I recommended to them not to do that through the city.
But I, or for me, either.
Yeah, they just need, uh, they just need to get with those who are laid off. And I, I recommend that they didn't go through the city with that.
Okay, well, the, the list?
Yeah.
We can get the list?
Yes, yes.
Okay, all right.
And, uh, I, also tomorrow, uh, July fifth, the holiday, October fourth, uh, we can go there. It was approved, it was removal, they got to say their clothes off. I'll put that on the sign. We got a three-
What, when they are they off?
Two thousand and fourth and fifth.
Four and fifth?
Yes, ma'am, put the fifth on, the seventh on, and we have three first reading for municipal license. I think we have another one tonight. Uh, also, we have a resolution to gratify and affirm, uh, a K-Nash that we voted on last week. And I, I guess we can do a few resolutions. So resolutions will come forth tonight, I mean, tomorrow. I think Ms. Wade, you text me about the capital equipment that we need to go on, about the street lights came in.
I've text you that.
Okay, you should be also texting somebody else.
I, I fortunate email, I fortunate entire council.
You know, I'll go out and state games, just phone it, and phone it.
If we just unsend it, um, as a group?
Yeah, okay.
Okay, I understand. Also, give it an authorization to-
Accept.
Interact with, yes, and the, the hopes of-
They did say, I'm gonna need to accept it, yeah.
I'm trying to remember, false consent, cause I probably tried to do it tonight.
Well, let me ask you about this consent, I mean, um-
Did you include James' purchase of the box on DOT?
Yeah, that's a fact, we put it in the group, we put it in the group.
This, this new, uh, ABC license, the date of their event, uh, this is Michael Johnson, a football player. His foundation, I don't see the date of his, but I know it's around, what, July? What are we, what are we doing with this? Are we, uh, first reading or we, uh?
First reading.
Or are we, uh, suspended from? Oh, yeah.
First reading.
Oh, yeah, yes.
Cause we still have time.
We still have time?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I think I know the meeting for twenty fifth, twenty sixth.
The thing is with that, you know, my mom was, my mom was gone when we did, uh, the Jazz on the Grass one, but, but luckily we doing some, some expedite in here. After the, the council votes on it, there's still some more process to be done with ABC. And to, like, tomorrow, when we cast this vote, hopefully in the favor of, um, Jazz on the Grass, he, they did have to, he's gonna have to now ride to camp. Take a letter from the clerk that it did happen, and it's so. And that's gonna be like a few days before Jason will, and so I'm just saying this, just so we know that the date on here is July, uh, we got a holiday where city hall will be closed. And, um, there's a process, after we vote, there's some more process that has to be done. So it's, it's not even certified with ABC until we finish our process. And then we can do the rest of the process with ABC because they're not nonprofit.
Okay, I know in the past, you know, I can be voted, I know that following morning, Ms. Harris can just take email them.
I asked her to be mine tomorrow, like, when we make the vote tomorrow night? I'm asking-
Email that affects it to them.
Take that, no.
They can turn around and move forward. Yeah, that's how, that's how the parents.
And you know, you know, Ms. Harris was waiting to tell us too, you know, uh, they're doing a Saturday, uh, a cleanup.
You know, Ms. Harris?
Oh, 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 yeah.
She was waiting to tell downtown, they're doing a, uh, a cleanup, you know, all the business owners and stuff. They're coming out in, uh, downtown areas doing a cleanup. And she wanted, uh, everybody, wanted the councils to be a part of, you know, I am, I, I, I will get up and go.
Also too, I think-
Support her, you know, they're trying to do that.
Wouldn't give to the discretion there, give them some items, bags and-
Well, I have, I told them I have bags and, um, pickup, uh, sticks and, uh, stuff like that.
All right, it's second to first. I hope we, we're not gonna be this long anymore.
Well, I'm not finished with my work tomorrow, but I also wanted to ask, Mr. President, uh, our city, city department in the, uh, training institute is just announced. No, I can do tomorrow. But I was gonna ask you if Ms. Wade can finish her, we went into an executive session and Ms. Wade was in the middle of her financial report. And I think, if I'm not mistaken, she stopped at the month of April. You, you ended with March, she stopped at the month of April. I'd like to hear the rest of her report tomorrow.
First of the month.
But she was there tomorrow?
Yeah.
I wonder where she left off as well, including the current, and plus she left off because we had to go into an executive session. I got some questions.
And can you have that lady, uh, that just sent a letter to me, cause the lady in the tech office said she ain't got nothing from the issue on coming through.
I talked to her Friday.
So when is she gonna come and give us a report?
Uh, it'll be, uh, next month.
Next month?
I talked to her Friday.
So it'll be the first of month with Ms. Wade?
Well, she probably do work session.
Okay, that's fine.
She'll do work session and then, uh, Ms. Wade will be, I talk, I'm gonna go on Friday. All right, anything else?
It's hot. Can we get some air tomorrow?
Why you not do work session?
What's that?
Why she do work session, why she can't?
I just asked, I, there's no reason, I just said.
I heard you, you know, in the assesses, that we will not move forward on that grass for the five thousand until we made contact with you.
I didn't take with it, uh, to see, that's another, we, we come to see about, who if I, I follow up tomorrow.
Unlock the, unlock the temperature gauge tomorrow.
If I have to have a brick out there.
No, I just heard it's locked.
Also too, we, we start our radio broadcast on tomorrow, uh, WSB. And I, he said, attorney, sign this request.
Oh, she sent the request to council to be on the agenda later?
And also, uh, it's in my mailbox. And I have to, I have to do a gratitude, I have to check my mailbox, probably send it out to the general. So, uh, I have to, I mean-
You're not for, you're not for. Were you that much support, Wade?
Yeah, I mean, what is it?
Oh, it's a press conference tomorrow, and we'll be in.
Yeah, it's a press conference.
It's a press conference, it's naked.